The flag salute this morning is going to be led by Supervisor Montgomery. If you'd please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor. Ann, would you please read the meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of September 8th, 2009. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. He has requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put into silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. We'll go to public comments and this is allow three minutes for any person wanting to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda this morning. Please come forward. We'd like your name and address for the record. Good morning.
Good morning. I want to take the three minutes. It'll be short and sweet here. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Bill Donovan. I'm the new commander of the Auburn office. I've had a chance to meet most of you so far through the fire and other meetings we've had. Just the programs that are set in place by the previous commander, Captain Ward, are going to continue. I've looked into most of them and outstanding programs. We're also starting a new program next month, an enforcement program with some of the local allied agencies. So I'll have more for that for you in the next few weeks. So just wanted to say hi. I live in Newcastle and happy to be here, so thanks.
You're welcome, Captain. Look forward to working with you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and we're going to go into, we're going to go into closed session.
Cut me off, Carl.
Oh, okay.
The board will now go into closed session, take up the items that are on page five of its agenda. We have several litigation matters to discuss and perhaps later discussions. And we should be back by nine o'clock.
Welcome to the meeting of the
County versus Burris, the Board received a status report of that matter and extended the contract for outside counsel. Under item B, there was a workers' compensation matter. The Board gave direction to the risk manager to, regarding that matter. There were two anticipated litigation matters. The Board received a report and gave direction to the county council with regards to those matter. There was also discussions of the TSA labor discussions, and that closes this report.
Okay. First item that we'll take up is the supervisor's comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. When we last met, it was an emergency session regarding the Auburn fires, and I mentioned that time that, pardon me, I mentioned that, that time that we had received some wonderful help from some folks at Thunder Valley Casino who had shown up with their, their box truck and spent, I don't know, two and a half, three hours helping us move things. I misidentified the, the name of the gentleman. I found his card when I got home that day. Scott Kidd and his wife didn't have a card, I believe her name was Mary, were the two who showed up with the truck and spent a number of hours helping us move the supplies in, first to the temporary shelter, then back out to the, the overnight shelter. Scott is the Vice President of Food and Beverage for Thunder Valley Casino, and I, I intend to send a letter to the management of the casino, thanking them for their support, specifically identifying Scott and his wife's assistance, and carbon copying Mr. Kidd on it, and unless I hear objection, I will express the appreciation of the full Board of Supervisors in my letter. Thank you very much.
Jennifer?
Following up on Kirk's comments, I, because we did have an emergency meeting last week, we didn't have a full house, and I really did want to take the opportunity to thank some folks, very specifically in some organizations. First Jim, of course, Supervisor Holmes, who rushed immediately to the 49th Fire on hearing of it. He kept me and the other supervisors up to date over the first few hours of the fire, and I really wanted to extend my thanks to Jim and just tell him how much I appreciate his help and service to the community. Second Kirk, following up on, on the, the casino coming and all the labor that, that you added to that. Kirk also came to the fire scene as soon as he was aware of it, and he worked really tirelessly to help relocate people, to make sure they had food, water, a place to stay, relocate the evacuees as necessary, and again, my thanks to you because that was really going above and beyond. Brian Jagger, who may be here but is such a shadow of his former self, I don't recognize him these days, did just an amazing job. I mean, he directed traffic, he answered questions, he functioned in many ways as kind of an interim public information officer, and again, helped folks to settle into the temporary evacuation shelters, and really the fact that he did it so soon after having some fairly major surgery, really speaks to his level of dedication and, and service to all of Placer's residents. So, you know, Brian, if you're listening or you're out there, you are the face of Placer County, and I thank you for that. You are absolutely selfless. Rui Cunha, the Office of Emergency Services, I do see Rui out there, did just a masterful job in both planning for an event like this one and pulling it together. There, there he is, the, the man, half his former self. The 49 Fire Local Assistance Center at DeWitt was up and running less than 48 hours after the fire started. It was incredibly helpful to a lot of folks who were very seriously affected by the fire. Many of the people who went through it made a point of coming back to the front desk where I had helped check them in to say, "Thank you. What you guys put together here was invaluable." I am so much more at ease in my own mind about how this process is going to work and how I am going to be able to rebuild my home. That, that was just a wonderful, wonderful thing to see, that people who had been through such a terrible experience felt so relieved after going through the local assistance center. And again, the Facilities Department at Administrative Services, as well as Health and Human Services and SEDRA, were just instrumental in making that happen. My, my thanks to all the nameless county employees who came over to the local assistance center and, you know, put in the time last week to serve our constituents. I wanted to give special thanks to PCSO and to the Placer County dispatchers who actually went out after the fire and volunteered in the community to take down trees, take down some vegetation, that some of the folks who still had homes were concerned might potentially reignite because they were close to their homes. That was really a wonderful thing to do, and it made the neighbors feel much more secure in staying in their neighborhoods. So you folks who did that are an absolute credit to our county, and you do have my sincere thanks. One homeowner in particular grabbed me and, and wanted me to specifically thank the Paradise Fire firefighters. I told him they were just one of many, but I promised him that I would give a shout-out to the Paradise Fire firefighters. They staged at his home and stopped the fire right there, so he was, you know, obviously particularly enamored of that group of firefighters. But there were dozens more agencies, and you all know who you are, and I, I really, truly believe that the folks who are on the fire line and who are supporting the fire staff are real haras, and I, and I want to thank you. I also know that my fellow supervisors share my concern as to the future of what happens in, in the area and the residents, and how the rebuilding process and the cleanup process works. And I'm just really, really impressed by the level of dedication, commitment, and public service that I saw across all levels of the county. Everybody in every department pitched in to help stop the fire, put the fire out, and serve our constituents after the initial emergency was over. It really gives me pride and pleasure to say that I served with such a great group of people. The rank and file, the staff, the folks here on this board, it really is my privilege, and, and I thank you all for it.
Thank you. Move on now to the consent calendar.
Do you have a proposal?
Second.
Roll call.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wagan?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Holmes?
Rockholm.
Yes, thank you. Okay, our first item we're going to take up is the 905, the Board of Supervision, Accommodation, Honoring Chris Wyatt.
Chris, would you come up to the podium, please?
We've already had public comment.
I, I wanted to ask if something could be removed from the content calendar?
Oh, excuse me. Which item? Revenue sharing? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, since I was the second on the motion, is that both items A and B?
Yes.
Okay. Is it maker of the motion?
Manager motioning.
Maker of the motion, I have to...
I amend my motion to remove items 28A and B for discussion.
Second concurs.
Roll call.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wagan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Rockholm?
Yes. Did you want to comment on those items?
If you would let me go ahead and introduce them, just so we get the subject out for folks who may not have the agenda. These are two revenue sharing items. The first one is approve appropriation of $125 in revenue sharing monies to the Sacramento Blue Star Moms Harvest Festival event to support the men and women in the armed forces as requested by Supervisor Holmes and then the...
No, by Rockholm.
Rock, thank you. By Rockholm. And then the second one is approve the appropriation of $500 in revenue sharing monies to the South Placer Heritage Foundation's Calpoke Fall Gathering event to help preserve historical sites in Placer County as requested by Supervisor Holmes.
Can we have your name, please?
Lori Bentoncourt. I have a problem with taxpayer money being spent at this time. All we keep hearing is doom and gloom, there's no money. Later in the agenda, you're going to vote to cut employees' pay and benefits. With regards to 28A revenue sharing for Sacramento Blue Star Moms, the Sacramento Blue Star Moms support the armed forces with Placer County, El Dorado County, and Sacramento County and the Harvest Festivals to help being held in Roseville. I don't have a problem with it. In fact, I wrote a personal check for $125. I'll mail it, so you can remove it from the agenda. It's a great organization. I have a son in the Army, and if you want to support it, I suggest that you write a personal check. It's a wonderful organization. With regards to B, it's a little vague. I don't understand what historical sites in Placer County you're wanting to preserve. I think if you're going to spend public money, you need to be a little more specific as to what sites are going to be preserved, where they're at, and how the money's going to be spent. When you're spending public money, there's, you need to be more specific as to what you're going to spend. There's lots of... of organizations out there that you can join as a person if you don't have your own money to spend. There's Rotary, there's Kiwanis, Lions. They have fundraisers every single weekend. And if you want to join those and join their fundraisers, you can help support these groups. But when we're spending taxpayer money on giving money away, when we're going to cut pay and benefits for employees, it's not appropriate. So...
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, the $500 in revenue sharing going to the South Placer Heritage Foundation is for the restoration of the Blue Goose Fruit Shed, which is a heritage piece of property in Placer County and specifically in the Lubus area. So that's why I support it.
And on the Blue Star Moms, my revenue sharing that is allotted to me, I spend that money on that to augment these folks during these hard times that they have trouble getting enough donations in. So I stand by the $125 out of my revenue sharing. Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Holmes?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Rockholm?
Yes. Supervisor Euler, correction, Wygant honoring accommodation for Chris Wyatt.
Chris, would you please come up to the podium now, so I can embarrass you, and then I'm going to come down and join you here in a second. But by way of framing, Chris Wyatt just retired from an extensive career in education. And the vast majority of that was at the better high schools compared to the one that her husband taught at for about the same length of time. He was over at Del Oro with the Eagles. But Chris chose Lincoln High School with the mighty zebras. And interestingly, Larry is my brother's closest friend growing up, and he and I and my brother are all Lincoln zebras. So I have no idea what he was thinking. But, you know, you have to do what you have to do, I guess, and pay the bills. So, Chris, I want to highlight your career here, if I can. Chris moved over here in 1967, I guess, and attended Sierra College where she and Larry met, in fact. In Placer County, they have their two daughters, Amy and Mandy, who are both married, and they have grandchildren also. I have a brand new one, by the way, Thursday. Chris started at Glenn Edwards Middle School and then transferred to Lincoln High School in 1974 to teach a variety of classes, including PE. She also became the Activities Director a couple of years, like 1980 to 1994, if I have all this information correctly. And then after 1994, she was a counselor. Chris was one of the educators who was just absolutely, totally committed. I mean, anybody from Lincoln knew that there was not any time that Chris wouldn't dedicate or donate to students. She was always willing to take on a new activity. She did things like help organize every 15 minutes, which Rocky has gone, oh, no, he's not there.
Chief, ahead.
Well aware of. She started, helped get underway the Interact Key Club and the Athletic Club for Boys and Girls. She also helped coach volleyball, softball, and gymnastics for several years, and one year took her softball team all the way to the playoffs in 1980. She, again, is the kind of, when you attend high school and you think back on your years in high school, Chris would be one of those educators that would come to your mind as being influential and there and always available to help the students. So with that, I'm proud to give you this resolution that was passed, by the way, unanimously by the board.
Wow.
And give you the opportunity to say anything, Chris, if you'd like to.
You supposed to say something?
The only thing with the podium is, please don't tell any old stories about me, Chris, because...
There are many, there are many.
Tell some stories tomorrow.
I'd have to ask my husband to come up, and you would not want to hear them. So it was a great honor for me to serve Western Placer. Getting involved in Placer County, I was from the big city, I was from the Bay Area, and coming to Lincoln was by default. I got the job first, so I will say that. But I loved working, and it's very hard for me to make this transition. I still am coaching golf, so I still am involved, and I still am involved in the Interact Key Club. So Lincoln has not gotten rid of me, and I'm very involved in my community. I love where I live, I love who I represent, and I thank you very much for this accommodation.
Did you have my grandchildren in your average, Kyle and Tyler Gordy?
Absolutely.
And Sarah?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So thank you very much. Thanks, Rob.
Okay, next item is 930. Item is the Health and Human Services adopting a resolution proclaiming September 2009 as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Placer County. Maureen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Maureen Bowman, Director of the Adult System of Care. And I have with me Kim Oxernart, who now works for one of Placer County's contract treatment agency. She'll be up in a moment. We are here to request for you to approve a resolution proclaiming September 2009 as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Placer County. In addition, we want to invite you to the Seventh Annual Recovery Happens Event. That will be happening on September 19 at Recreation Park from 10 until 2 here in Auburn. I know Supervisor Holmes will be attending, but we would certainly invite all the supervisors. In Placer County, many people are living productive and satisfying lives as a result of recovery from alcoholism and drug addiction. Placer County residents receive assistance through the many substance abuse treatment resources provided by Placer County and by the Substance Abuse Treatment Community Agencies. Many Placer County residents have completed substance abuse treatment, been reconnected with their families, and returned to live healthy and productive lives. Over 600 persons successfully completed programs through Placer County in the last year. Treatment programs are only one path to recovery. Other residents of Placer County have experienced recovery on their own with the assistance of self-help, support from faith-based organizations, medication treatments through the medical providers. There is no one path to recovery. Each person's intervention and treatment is unique to his or her own individual needs, and all recovery paths will be celebrated on the Seventh Annual Recovery Happens Event on September 19. I wanted to just mention that this year, the national campaign Together We Learn, Together We Heal, has a focus on all the recovery resources that exist with our many communities. And we know that as resources are becoming more limited, the caring communities in Placer County are really going to need to reach out to support those persons who are achieving recovery. I'm sure our community will respond to this challenge. In addition, I want to mention that we also are relying more on the Internet, as all of our resources are. And the Placer Network of Care is a web-based resource directory that is available for all. It's placernetworkofcare.org, easy to find. We have discussed, in the past, I've given you statistics about how we can prove the cost benefit of treatment and recovery in our community. And we know that when people are in recovery, it's a win for that person, for their family, and the entire community. And rather than give you more data at this point, I think that just hearing a story of recovery really explains it much better than many of the statistics we could quote. So I'd like to introduce Kim Oxern, who's going to share a little bit about her experiences.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kim, and I'm a recovering addict. And I have five years, three months, and 25 days clean. When I was a little girl, I was good. I got good grades, played sports in school, and made my parents proud. Things changed when my stepdad started molesting me and my mom began hitting me. I started running away from home and hanging with a different crowd. Pretty soon, my mom threw me out, and I was 16 years old. I never got to go back home after that, so I survived. I got with abusive men to take care of me, and I started using drugs. I don't remember doing anything else but being abused and abusing drugs. I don't even remember what I wanted to be when I grew up. Somewhere in all that, I had two wonderful boys. They're now 20 and 24. My 20-year-old has a disability called Prader-Willi Syndrome, and he still lives with me. Having kids wasn't a cure for my addiction, except for the time when I was pregnant, I used throughout their young lives. Being arrested 17 times, three of those times being drug offenses, completing three residential treatments, two outpatient programs in Prop 36, wasn't enough for me to get clean. My son taking my granddaughter to another state wasn't even enough. I hit my bottom May 12, 2004, at the age of 43, when the cops came to my house because I was selling meth. They took my youngest son to a foster home and me to jail, where I was sure I was facing prison time. A turning point came for me in the form of a CPS worker visiting me to get the particulars on my son. During that visit, I was so down on myself that I'm sure she felt compelled to tell me that I needed to stop feeling that guilt and shame. She told me, "Go ahead and feel it all that day and kick myself all day long, feeling all that guilt and shame, but tomorrow, stop." Phew, like, what? How do you stop? I didn't know how to stop feeling what I thought I had to feel because of my actions. The shame was only keeping me in the past, and I didn't want to be there anymore. So I stopped. From there, I've been able to continually move forward. Now I tell other women, they don't have to feel that shame anymore. How I got clean and have been able to stay clean is first, I never forget where I came from and the consequences of my actions. I completed another outpatient program early in recovery. I attend regularly 12-step meetings. I sponsor women, and I've been of service since I had eight days clean. Giving back has been a big part of my recovery. So in addition to being of service to my fellowship, I am of service to the community, both as a board member and a volunteer coordinator for Care Crisis Nursery. For HNI, which stands for Hospitals and Institutions, I go into the jail and bring in the message of hope to the inmates who desire 12-step meetings. And since I'm a two-time graduate of Hope House, one of Placer County's providers, I also bring them HNI meetings. I have since gotten a job at Hope House as a nutritionist and fitness trainer. My passion is to work with women in recovery, so this is a dream come true. I continue to go to school, even though I have earned a certificate in nutrition and fitness training and an AA degree in liberal arts. I didn't get clean just to be clean. I had to do something with the potential that I was given, innate potential. So off I go to earn another degree in photography. And ultimately, my dream is to have a Bachelor of Science in Nutrition, so that I can become a registered dietitian. I always wanted to be Kimberly Oxert, RD. I need the RD next to my name. So, you know, I mean, none of that seemed possible five years ago, and I'm not sure it's possible now. I just know that anything seems possible now. So I'm a success, hi, this is so hard for me to say, but this is something that was suggested. I am a successful woman, who is a good mother and an inspiration to other women in recovery. And I'm here to say that recovery does happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kim. We're now asking the board to proclaim September 2009 as Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Placer County, and to demonstrate continued support and commitment to alcohol and drug treatment and recovery, because we know in Placer County, treatment happens and recovery works. Thank you.
Jim, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to let the board know that I've attended the Recovery Happens Events for the past three years. And it's really encouraging, because you hear stories like the one we just heard. You see people that have been in recovery for four weeks, and you hear stories from people that have been in recovery for 35 years. And it's just encouraging. It gives people hope that there is a life after drugs, and there's no end to the recovery. It's an everyday process of recovering. But I would encourage any of my board members to go. It is, it's very rewarding to see people who have gotten their lives back, gotten their families back, they've got good jobs, nice cars, after, you know, years of drug abuse. So anyhow, with that, I would approve, make a motion to approve this.
Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to item number nine.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Jim Bogan, Purchasing Manager. Another tough act to follow. It's really a pleasure. Item 90 is requesting your board's approval to award bid number 9915 in the maximum aggregate amount of $851,000 for food to support the day-to-day operation of Probation Central Kitchen. Thirty-seven vendors bid on 12 categories of food items, and blanket purchase orders will be issued for one or more categories than the eight lowest bidders. To further minimize costs, the Central Kitchen will routinely solicit quotes from several of these contracted vendors to obtain best daily prices. This makes it impossible to accurately predict the individual uses of each BPO. So we also ask that you authorize the purchasing manager to transfer funds between BPOs as necessary. The maximum aggregate amount of this award will be $851,000, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions on this item? CNN, bring it back to the board.
Second.
Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 10, surplus property.
Choose for three seconds, Will.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Albert Ritchie with the Facility Services Department. The next item before your board is a request from staff to sell a piece of surplus property down in the city of Roseville. This is a piece of property that staff doesn't have any foreseeable use by the county, and the City of Roseville Redevelopment Agency had approached the county requesting to purchase this particular parcel. The specific actions we're asking your board to consider today is by four-fifths vote, approve an agreement of purchase and sale between the County of Placer and the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Roseville for the sale of the property in the amount of $210,000. In addition, we're asking your board to authorize the chairman to execute this agreement and to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services to execute on behalf of your board any other necessary documents to complete this transaction. This particular piece of property is adjacent to the downtown, the old town Roseville area. Roseville's plans, that they've indicated to county staff, is to ultimately build a parking garage to serve the historic area down there. The county does have a couple long-term nonprofit leases on the property. The City of Roseville, or the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Roseville, will assume responsibility for those leases and into the future. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions your board may have, and ask that you consider the actions I previously stated.
Any questions on this item? Anyone in the audience have any questions on this item? Kirk?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman. I just have a comment. That is, I think the City of Roseville is to be commended for, I think, the vision that they've had for revitalizing their downtown. A lot of businesses in that area and property owners, as the city center has kind of diffused over the years, it's been a tough area to make go of it. And they're committed to that revitalization. This piece of property is key in their attempt to bring a nice parking facility to the area. And even in the tough economic times, they're still moving forward with trying to create a viable downtown area. And I hope the board will support it.
You want to make a motion?
I'd move approval. Thank you.
Second.
Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. B?
Now that we sold a piece of property, we're going to consider buying a piece of property. With the current economic situation, this, an opportunity came before county staff to look at a piece of property up in the Kings Beach area. And this particular piece of property is currently owned by the California State Automobile Association. It was brought to county staff's attention recently, that the CSAA was interested in selling this particular piece of property. It meets some near-term office requirements for county. It also better positions us for the long term to meet the facility needs up in the Lake Tahoe area. The specific actions on this particular item that we're asking your board to consider is to approve an agreement of purchase and sale between the county and the California State... State Automobile Association. It's a .43-acre parcel with a 3,344-square-foot furnished office building on it, and the amount of the sale would be $860,000. We're asking you to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement. We're also asking you to adopt a resolution, again, giving the Director of Facility Services the authority to execute all the other necessary documents to complete this transaction, and to add the piece of property to the master fixed asset list. This structure, there was a structure originally built in the mid-'70s. It was completely reconstructed in 1989. We've had county staff go up and look at the building. It's in very good shape. It's been well-maintained. All the mechanical units are fairly updated. There will be some minor accessibility improvements that need to be made to it, and cabling for the county network and systems. Other than that, the purchase price of $860,000, we see, again, as an opportunity for the county to take advantage of the current economic situation, to get a piece of property with an office building at a relatively good price. With that, I'd be willing to answer any questions your board may have.
Have any questions? Jennifer?
I just want to say, Albert, thank you for bringing this in front of us. It's got out into the community up there that the county is looking at acquiring this piece, and I have to say, it's received overwhelming support from people locally. It'll help us bring Department of Public Works employees out of Nevada County, back into Placer County, where they'll be buying lunch, buying gas, doing local shopping, and just really helping to revitalize the Kings Beach and Tahoe Vista communities. Most things that we do as a county receive a mixed response. I have to say that this has not. There has just been absolute overwhelming support, once people understand what we're doing here, and I really do hope that the board chooses to go ahead and approve this today.
Any other comments? Anybody in the audience want to make a comment on this item? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the board.
I would like to make a comment.
Yes.
I hope I'm not out of turn.
Well, come up here to the podium, please. May we have your name, and...
My name is Ben Glau. I live in the county. And we're all here for a different topic on the agenda, but I'm listening to the sale of one piece of property to purchase another piece of property, and I think that's great that we're able to sell something in these economic times. But as just a normal, everyday working guy, a lot of us are selling stuff to put money away for what is, seems to be, an impending hard time, as far as economic times go. It seems to me it would be a good time to put that money in the bank. I'm selling stuff so that I can put some money away for my kids, and the things that I have to do for my future and for their future, it just seems like the wrong time to be spending more money. Maybe I should put that money to a better use than another building.
Thank you. Any other comments? Albert, maybe could you just kind of, we're going to move people out of one area into another area, so there's going to be a savings, I would assume.
Correct. Currently, the Department of Public Works has staff in an office building in the town of Truckee over in Nevada County, as Supervisor Montgomery stated. The annual rent that we're currently paying is in excess of $62,000. As your boards heard at previous meetings, the county is going to be in business for many, many years to come, in perpetuity. We're not going away in 10 years, five years, or 20 years, 50 years even. We're going to have a need for a presence up in the Tahoe bases. By this rent avoidance, eventually, the price will more than be paid for over time. In addition, this is an opportunity to acquire a office building that's in very good shape at a very reasonable price, is staff's opinion.
Any other comments? Jennifer?
If I could just follow up on that, you know, additionally, what we're doing now is we're paying rent on a building we don't own. It is not our asset. If we do choose today to go ahead with the acquisition of this property, it will be paid back in about 13 years, I believe, based upon current rent at the Truckee location, which quite likely will continue to rise. Additionally, it will be a valuable asset that, should we need to, we could sell and recoup additional costs. So I think this is a very wise investment that we're proposing here today. It will serve our constituents better. It will serve our county as a whole better, and it will serve our employees at the Department of Public Works better, because they will have offices in which they actually have room to swing a cat. Right now, they are just crammed into these little tiny offices in Truckee, and they do an admirable job, but I just think this is a benefit on so many levels, that I would just really advocate for us approving this today.
You want to make the motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Rockholm.
Yes, item C.
And the last item I have for your board this morning is to approve and execute an agreement with the Tahoe City Public Utility District, authorizing the use of park dedication fees from Area 2, in the amount of $72,427 for the extension of a water line and construction of a fire hydrant and drinking fountain at the Lake Forest Beach up in the Tahoe City area. Area 2, or, let me back up just a minute. The county collects park dedication fees on new development throughout the county. We have 16 different benefit areas that are identified geographically. Area 2 covers an area from the Placer County line as you leave Truckee, up past Squaw Valley, Alpine Meadows, up to Tahoe City, over to Dollar Hill, and then down to the El Dorado County, going the other direction. As projects come up within this benefit area, park dedication fees is one funding source that not only Placer County, but other public agencies, look at funding the various improvements. Tahoe City Public Utility District approached us with this improvement. This is a county-owned beach, so it will benefit the county property at the end of the beach by providing the fire hydrant and drinking fountain. The utility district, the use of these funds was contingent upon the neighborhood down there voting an assessment to upgrade their water system overall. This will also pays for the county's share of that upgrade. That particular assessment ballot passed with a 74% approval to the new assessment. Alan Harry from the Public Utility District is here today if you have any specific questions on the project itself. Other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have of me, and ask that you consider this item.
Do you have any questions on this item? Anyone in the audience like to address this item? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Rockholm.
Yes. Thank you, Albert. Let's, I think we have time for item number 11. We can take these all together, correct, Tony?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mark Starr, Director of Community Health and Clinics for the county. Item 11 before you is requesting that your board take four actions. First is to prospectively approve the 2009-2010 Conference of Public Health Preparedness Revenue Agreement with the California Department of Public Health, in the amount of $1.4 million, roughly, contingent upon review and approval by risk management and county council. The second is to sign the required certifications in order to receive these funds. Third is to sign the H1N1 Influenza Supplemental Funding Agreement, that will allow us to accept a 25% advance payment of the supplemental H1N1 funding. And lastly, to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign subsequent contract amendments. I should note that there's no county general fund required in order to accept these funds. The reason for this request at this time is that State Department of Public Health has made available 25% of the $465,000 supplement for H1N1 planning in response that has been made available to us through the federal government. This will allow us to get that advance as soon as possible. Additionally, prospective authorization for all of the public health emergency preparedness funding, which will be coming our way in the next couple months, is needed to avoid further urgent response times from the state. And lastly, this authorization will expedite receipt of revenues for costs associated with H1N1 prevention, education, and treatment. As I'm sure you're aware, most counties throughout the US, and in fact, the world, the H1N1 virus is circulating, and certainly present here, and is anticipated to circulate even more this fall and into next year. Health and Human Services, Office of Emergency Services, Public Information Officer, Healthcare Facilities, Emergency Responders, and Law Enforcement have all made planning, coordinated response to H1N1 a high priority. And we've already begun working with key community partners, such as schools, to do things such as implementing actions to reduce spread, monitoring absences, and planning for school-based vaccine clinics. And we're also working with healthcare providers in order to protect their staff from exposure from patients potentially infected, to do hospital search capacity planning, and for testing and treatment guidelines. Receipt of this funding will enable full implementation of these planned activities to address the H1N1 response and public health emergency preparedness in general. Certainly open to any questions.
Kirk?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at what the California Department of Public Health sent us, the agreement language dated August 26. And I just want to clarify, we are talking, our action today authorizes the advance payment of 25% of the total, correct, of the 1.37, so about $340,000?
So the action today is 25%. One of the actions is, which was item C, is 25% of $465,000. So there are several numbers here. 1.3, 1.4 million is our total preparedness allocation that we're anticipating this year. Part of that is the supplement for H1N1 flu, which is $465,000. And we can get 25% of that supplement right now.
Oh.
So we're asking you to approve signing the forms that are necessary to get that supplement, 25% advance of that supplement right now. And also to authorize us to go ahead and sign the subsequent 1.4 million agreement, although it will be a little bit less, it'll be less than 25% advance. I probably confused that again.
So then roughly the $400,000, well, they don't, in the agreement, they don't break out dollar amounts for each of the four categories that we identify that we're applying for? So what you're saying is, the H1N1 portion of the four categories is roughly $400,000?
Yeah, all these four categories in this letter total $465,000.
And where's the additional $900,000 come in?
That's our, that's our regular award that we've been getting year after year.
So this is just supplemental in addition to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's different here is not only are we asking approval to get the supplemental H1N1 money, but we're also asking approval to sign the full agreement for preparedness funds when it comes in, in a couple months, so we don't have to come back here, and we can respond to these urgent requests from public health at the state level to get these things signed quickly.
Right. Now, I noticed in the agreement, they're saying that they are willing to pay the initial 25%. We're then required to submit a work plan and budget for the entire allocation, for each of the four funding allocations described in Attachment A. Is there any risk, if we submit our work plan and our budget for the remaining 75%, is there any risk that that first 25%, what, roughly 125 grand, is recourse to us? If they, for whatever reason, they reject the work plan?
I think the answer is no.
Okay.
Anything's possible, but are...
Have we ever had a work plan rejected?
No.
Okay, thank you. That helps. And then, perhaps just an observation, this was dated and sent to us approximately the 26th of August. They want our executed agreement back by September 10.
They want?
It's a good thing we had a board meeting scheduled.
Yeah. You're exactly right. That's one of the reasons for the prospective approval.
I also find it interesting that these days, with even federal courts accepting electronic notice and signature, that they want our signed forms back via overnight mail. Obviously, the state really capping on electronic efficiencies these days. Okay, that's all I got. Thanks.
I'd be glad to share those comments, colleagues.
And with all that, just mostly for the benefit of the public, mark your staff reports real clear, but there is no expected general match, general fund match to this, correct?
Correct.
Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item? Anybody want H1N1? Bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Yeah.
When will the vaccinations start?
Right now, the estimates are that the new vaccine will be available mid to late October, at least the first portion of it. It's going to kind of be rolled out, and won't all be delivered all at once. So we'll probably see some availability towards the end of October. It'll probably target for certain folks that are at higher risk for complications, so they get immunized first. But encourage everyone to get their seasonal flu vaccine, which will be available soon, and that should be done also.
Thank you. Kirk, did you have another comment?
Oh, no, sir.
Thank you. I will take up item number three. Lauren Clark.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleasure to be here this morning to bring a little bit of an update regarding the status of the Placer County Conservation Plan, but most importantly, to bring a memorandum of understanding to you with the staff recommendation that we execute this with the City of Lincoln. Just in terms of background, the committee that was formed in February of 2007 has continued to meet with the City of Lincoln. That involved two council members from the City of Lincoln, and two of our board supervisors, Supervisors Wygant and Euler. Recently, there's been some movement and tentative agreements on some changes to the mapping, which we'll discuss in a second. But most importantly, there was an agreement reached that the county and the city should tie the relationship together as partners on the PCCP closer through the actual execution of an MOU that has been brought to you today. The MOU, at this point in time, is preliminary in the sense that it's really defining the partnership. There will be additional agreements required between the county, and the city, and the state and federal agencies as we bring this process to a close. So this particular MOU is really focused on commitments to staffing, commitments on preparation of information exchange and information sharing. It also commits the city to a cost-sharing percentage based upon the amount of land that they anticipate they will need regulatory coverage for. And it's about 30% of the area that is covered by the PCCP. There's also a series of reimbursement clauses contained within the document that account for costs that the county has incurred since the Ad Hoc Committee was formed in 2007, costs that we anticipate in the future to be paid at that percentage, that 30% fair share. Also, an agreement to set aside, to a future negotiation, reimbursement for costs incurred prior to 2007. And then, also important to the City of Lincoln, is an agreement with the county to defer payment for two years. So the city has agreed to, sort of in the bottom line, to compensate the county for the work on the preparation of the PCCP since its inception. More specifically, we have focused on a 30% reimbursement for the most recent costs, which involve direct participation by the city. A copy of the MOU has been provided to you. That document was already signed and executed by the City Council at a council meeting last Tuesday evening. In terms of the map itself, and there's three maps that should come up on the screen, and they're also contained within your package on pages seven, nine, and 11. On page seven, you'll find the January 2007 reserve map. This was prepared by the Board of Supervisors as really the baseline around which the Ad Hoc Committee would form, and initiate negotiations with the cities, maintain lines of communication of the property owners, the environmental community, the agricultural community, and obviously, most importantly, the wildlife agencies, through whom we have to obtain agreements. So that was the foundation around which we built the reserve system. In September of 2008, did the first one come up? What's important about the January 2007 map is everybody understood that it was really the baseline or the foundation for discussion. It was not anticipated at that time that that map would serve as the map through which we would obtain of all of our agreements. But it was a map that was served as a compromise around which we could move the project forward. I'll go ahead and proceed to the September 2008, which is found on page nine of your package. This was an important map in that it represented the first output from the Ad Hoc Committee. It was brought to the Board of Supervisors at a public meeting, and it again served as the next baseline, or the next place around which we would negotiate the PCCP. What was important about the September 2008 map is that it contained the development transition area, which was a large area around 22,000 acres, within which we knew we would conserve some land, but without a great deal of specificity as to where. We just knew what type, which was Vernapool landscapes. But we all... But we also knew that development would likely occur within that area as well. But because of the lack of precision about precisely where we would conserve, we ended up having to develop standards that would guide the future conservation of properties when individual projects came forward. That map, or those set of standards, also resulted in a response from the agencies that there was a potential for less regulatory certainty within that area. So it led to a great deal of discussion within the Ad Hoc Committee about the retention of that approach and negotiating around that as we move forward with the plan submittal, or should we take one more attempt at a map that yielded a greater deal of certainty and precision? And that was the map that is now before the Board of Supervisors in August of 2009. And I apologize for the head turning, but I'm still not seeing it on the screen, but we're getting closer, I believe.
Probably a couple of years before.
Okay. Just to walk through the maps again briefly. The important thing that happened with the 2007 map that was a significant change beyond the boundaries was there's an area depicted in orange, which was potential reserve areas. Those are now gone. Potential reserve areas represented lands that a property owner believed would go into conservation, had made statements about their willingness to put that property into conservation, but there was no firm agreement, there was no conservation easement. So that went away with the August 2, or excuse me, September 2008 map. The September 2008 map, again, the most important thing there was the development transition area. And then lastly, we'll just move to August 2009, since that's where we're at today. And I'm not going to look to my left anymore. The August 2009 map represents the greatest degree of certainty of all the maps that we prepared. It represents consensus between the county and the City of Lincoln as to approximately where conservation should occur. The area in purple, which is the potential reserve area boundary, is approximately 71,000 acres in size. The areas in white, which is the areas for potential development, is 111,000 acres in size. But most importantly, we believe it provides a credible argument for the issue around which we have spent a considerable amount of time, which is the conservation of vernal pool resources at a sufficient enough level that we can actually bring forward a conservation strategy. So the August 2009 map represents that condition. At this time, staff is completing preparation of the actual written document, the conservation strategy. We are working with a whole team of consultants to bring that back to both our stakeholder working groups, the Ad Hoc Committee, and ultimately, the Board of Supervisors and the City Council of Lincoln. The action today is only on the MOU. We only bring the map to your attention, so you have background information. There certainly is some potential for additional change and refinement, but we do believe we are at a point we can build a strategy around this map. The action items that we brought to the board today is really our recommendation through the Ad Hoc Committee that you also execute the memorandum of understanding, which is starting on page 13 and is attached to your staff report as Exhibit 1. And thank you for your patience with the maps.
Any questions?
We're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this item? Can we have your name, please?
Yes, I'm Adrian Blackheart, and I live in Lincoln. Regarding the 2008 map, I'd like to know why District 5 was excluded from that. Is it because of the uniqueness of the area, or is it because of something philosophical? Do you gentlemen know?
Robert?
Sure, I'll help you answer that.
Thank you, sir.
The map drawing, as you can imagine, has been an extensive and excruciating process because there were a lot of diverse stakeholder interest, and that all filtered down to what the map looked like. The supervisor representing District 5, at the last time we had a map discussion of consequence, requested that his district be excluded from Phase 1 of the conservation plan. It's expected that Phases 2 and 3 of the conservation plan, if they continue, will in fact then include District 5, but the board at that time accommodated that request, and we've undertaken a significant amount of work and investment such that at this point in time, Phase 1 can be completed intact, and we can address District 5 subsequent to that.
Okay. Next question. It was said that in consequent maps, things were simplified to improve the certainty. At the same time that that happens, doesn't it make the plan weaker in terms of authority or something?
Ma'am, could I ask you to ask all your questions, and then we can answer them all at once? Please?
Why is Lincoln at the forefront of this? Are they the most important area, or do they have the most important conservation things to protect rather than the other cities? What is a Placer Parkway? I'm only used to that term in terms of street names, but obviously, on page 19, that's not what is meant. And I wonder if an ordinary citizen can get a colored copy of this map somewhere? Those are the questions.
I'd like to take a shot, and then maybe Supervisor Weigant can follow along where I missed. If I might just add on to Supervisor Weigant's comment about the removal of District 5, it was at Supervisor Kranz's request that his district be taken out. Throughout this process of the PCCP and the area that we've been concentrating on, which is the West Placer area, the one resource that we've been most focused on is vernal pool grasslands and the associated vernal pools within those. District 5 doesn't have any, and so the removal of District 5 was largely inconsequential to what the primary objective of the PCCP was, and that is to reach a, the opportunity for a relative equilibrium between disturbance and preservation. So removing District 5 wasn't consequential in that regard. I think perhaps if it had been consequential in that regard, there might have been some pushback on the part of the board to the request to that one supervisor, but there wasn't, and so we move forward. In terms of Lincoln's participation, we invited all incorporated cities to participate. We invited the City of Roseville, Rockland, Lincoln, those that have area impacted by this. We invited all to participate. Rockland is essentially built out at this point, their boundary is pretty well defined. Lincoln engaged, Roseville did not, but we've invited Roseville on several occasions to engage this process and participate. The Placer Parkway, one that's near and dear to my heart, is the chairman of the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority. The Placer Parkway is the name for whatever will hopefully, one day, be in the ground as the connection between Highway 65 over to Highway 99. We've been, we've been in, in the EIR process, Tier 1 of the EIR process on this project since about 2003. We believe, I'm not going wood and anything around, we may finally have what's called lead plug concurrence from the agencies on an alignment, and it's the northernmost alignment that is depicted on most of the maps that we have, it doesn't show up on this one. But that's what the Placer Parkway, when you hear reference of that, it's a connection from Highway 65 at roughly the, north of the Sunset Interchange at the Whitney Boulevard, is that the name of what we'll come across? Thank you, Whitney Boulevard, and then across, dropping a little bit south as it proceeds west, and ultimately connecting out at Sankey Road in Sutter County, in concert with their plan, the Sutter Point Plan that they're moving forward out there. And then I believe copies of the colored map are available for download at the Planning Department. It would require a color printer, but I believe they are available for download on the Planning Department's website.
Okay, because I couldn't find it in this. There's no color in this available.
Not in the staff report, I think that was staff just saving their pennies, but it is available for download.
Thank you for your time and courtesy.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this item?
Rocky, if I could just add?
Yes?
The vast majority of the conservation plan and the yet-to-be-considered development occurs in my district, my supervisory district. So the project, of course, is something for which I have a huge amount of passion, but in that you're a Lincoln resident, if you have any questions and would actually like to talk to me personally and use my office to get you maps or any other information, I'd be more than happy to provide that for you.
She didn't want it?
Oh, I have a really big copy of it. I don't need the small one. You can have it.
Any other questions? I'll bring it back to the board. Jim, first?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Supervisor Euler and Supervisor Weigant for steadfastly staying with this. It's been a long, torturous process, and you've done a great job. And finally, we're getting some movement, and I look forward to it coming back to us.
Yeah, thanks.
Actually, one committee I was glad I wasn't appointed to.
So was I.
If I could just add, Rocky, thanks, Jim, and it's been hugely rewarding, particularly at this point with this memorandum. I think we have really the final definition to the process, that you will see a huge amount of progress occurring over the next few months with a very positive outcome, and the vast majority of new growth in South Placer will be under this umbrella. And the level of planning and the quality of conservation and the cost-effectiveness of the development, I think 50 years from now, we'll look back and think what a great idea it was, and perhaps one of those jurisdictions that isn't participating might think that they made a mistake.
Jennifer, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I really, I want to echo Jim's comments and just say, Robert and Kirk, you guys have done just an incredible job on this, and the amount of time and effort and energy that you have both put to this is almost inconceivable. And I think we're really moving toward a terrific outcome here. I think Placer County, under your guidance, is going to be really a role model for other counties in the state and in the country who are going to look at what you've done, what we've done, when and if this finally happens in the future. And we can be very proud of ourselves, and particularly proud of the two of you, and I just really wanted to make that known publicly, that I appreciate all the time you've put into it.
Somebody want to make a motion? Hmm? All right, and second? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Let's do number 12. See if we can do 12 and, 12A and B. Let's do A first.
Good morning, Bob Costa, Department of Public Works. The first item is a request for your board to approve a county service area zone of benefit for the Courts Drive Self-Storage Project in North Auburn. The self-storage project is located on a portion of a 9.2 acre parcel at the intersection of Courts Drive and Rock Creek Road in North Auburn. The conditions of approval for the project require the developer to build an extension of Courts Drive through the property and to form a county service area zone of benefit to fund long-term surface rehabilitation and storm drainage maintenance. Project is currently consisting of only one parcel, so a single ballot was mailed out to the current owner, requesting that they vote on the formation of County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 214, and the imposition of a charge of $2,855.85 for the first year, with provision for annual indexed inflationary adjustments of up to 5%. A parcel split was also approved for this project, but has not yet been completed. When the parcel is further divided, the zone of benefit charge will be divided among the total parcels. The action requested today is for your board to conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, receive the election results, and if those results are favorable, consider adopting a resolution found on page 178 of your package. Your clerk has the election results and will present them following the public hearing.
Yes, I need to open it up for a public hearing. Anybody wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Ann, will you read the?
Um, yes. There was a ballot, the tabulation reflects the actual ballot received from the property owner, was received by the Office of the Clerk of the Board on August 31st, 2009. There's currently one property owner, J.D. Development LLC, of one parcel, APM 052030058. The official ballot and waiver confirms a yes vote.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that, since the votes represent unanimous approval, we'd recommend that you adopt a resolution establishing Zone of Benefit 214 and establishing first-year charge of $2,855.85.
Kirk?
Yeah, move approval of the resolution establishing the zone of benefit, as well as the associated first-year charge.
All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
V, what happened to your arm? Did you?
You know, Tahoe is a tough place. But we're moving along.
There was all that cat swinging, they can't do.
We've got that tight office up there, so.
Good morning, members of the board. Chairman, Peter Kratz with Public Works here on item 12B. The action requested of you today on this item is to approve project plans and specifications and authorize the department to advertise for bids for what's known as the Fox Clean Water Pipe Project. It's the first phase of what's known as the Kings Beach Water Quality Improvement Project, which is a multi-phase, multi-year, multimillion-dollar effort to improve the water quality runoff in the community of Kings Beach. This first phase will reduce the hydraulic loading of stormwater in the urban area because it takes a lot of clean water, diverts it around the dirty urban area, so we can then address that dirty water with future phase best management practice efforts. So this is a critical first phase for this water quality improvement effort for Kings Beach. Environmentally, the county prepared a mitigated negative declaration to satisfy sequel requirements, which your board approved on December 9th, 2008. And although it's not noted in the board, we are also complying with federal requirements with the receipt of a U.S. Forest Service decision memo. Fiscally, this effort is being pursued through American Recovery and Reinvestment Act federal funding, and then that money will be funneled through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program in the amount of $3 million. The engineer's estimate for the project is $2.3 million. The remaining funds will be used for permitting and design. Looking forward to moving this project forward, so with that, ask for any questions you might have, and recommend you approve this item.
Kirk?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anybody in the audience wish to comment on this item?
Move approval?
Okay. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 13, the contract between Placer County Sheriff's Office and City of Colfax.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Devin Bell, Under Sheriff, Placer County. We're before you today. Your board is requesting to approve a contract between the law enforcement, or for law enforcement services between the Placer County Sheriff, Corner Marshal, and the City of Colfax. This contract is the three-year continuation of law enforcement services beginning July 1st, 2009, through June 30th, 2010. The contract amount for the fiscal year 0910 is $546,424, which is an increase of $16,824, or 3.18%. The contract is included in the fiscal year 0910 final budget submitted to your board for approval, and there's no impact on the general fund. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to address those. The guy with the snappy haircut next to me is Sergeant Mittens Sander. He is our station commander.
Snappy is your haircut, huh?
Absolutely, snappy.
Seen a board question? Anybody in the audience wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
Move approval?
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Let's take a, we're going to take a quick break, and we'll be back for the 10:30 item. Let's take a, we're going to take a quick break, and we'll be back for the 10:30 item. I guess I better turn on the microphones. Before we start this item here, I want to, I just want to explain some of the rules and how we're going to do this. I'm going to allow 60 minutes total time for this, for discussion. We'll start out with a short presentation from the county, then we'll turn it over to whoever's representing the DSA that wants to speak on behalf of the DSA as a whole. I will allow more than three minutes to, for that person or that person's to speak, and then I'll open it up to the general public to make comments. Allow three minutes per comment. But at the end of 60 minutes, I'm going to close the hearing and bring it back to the board. So with that, I'll turn it over to? Yes, Mike Boyle, on behalf of County Executive Office, will open it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, board members. Mike Boyle with the County Executive Office. With me today, to my left, is Mr. Dick Whitmore from Lieber Cassidy and Whitmore, who, as you know, has been deeply involved in this item before your board today. Also accompanying me over to your right is Therese Leonard from the Executive Office and Nancy Nittler, the Personnel Director. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Mr. Whitmore provide you and the audience some background, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you very much. What I'd like to do first is describe a little of the background of the negotiations that lead us to this matter being on your agenda today. The negotiations with the deputy sheriffs began in November 2006, almost three years ago. They continued off and on through the rest of '06, '07, and '08. We had 18 separate bargaining sessions. We had seven separate sessions with the state mediator. In late 2008, the county decided that 25 sessions were enough, and they called an end to the negotiations, proposing that we start a new set of negotiations after the 1st of January. We, in fact, did begin negotiating in early 2009, discussing many of the same issues that had been discussed over the prior two and a half years. They including, they included sharing of health insurance premiums, sharing of retirement contributions, changes to specialty pays, including wellness premium, and other various cost-saving measures. When we were talking in 2009, we were obviously talking in a very different economic environment than we had been over the prior two and a half years. The staff report has some of the details of the economic situation the county face, is still facing, but was facing in early 2009. We had nine more bargaining sessions in 2009. On July 1, the Deputy Sheriffs Association declared impasse in negotiations, indicating that they thought further discussions would be futile. The county did not disagree. At that point, we had had 27 separate bargaining sessions, seven mediation sessions, a total of 34 separate meetings over three years. The county gave notice that it would, that it intended to unilaterally adopt its last best and final one-year proposal. When we did that in July, the deputy sheriffs asked for another meeting. The county agreed. We had a series of discussions, and eventually, on August 3, reached a tentative agreement, a two-year tentative agreement. It was signed by the Deputy Sheriffs Association, and they represented to us that they would support the tentative agreement as they brought it to their membership for a ratification vote. We learned on August 28, oh, the board, at staff's request, postponed any action, which was originally scheduled for August 4, on the one-year unilateral adoption to allow the membership an opportunity to consider and vote on the tentative agreement its negotiators had signed. We learned on August 28 that the membership had turned down the tentative agreement by an overwhelming vote. The vote was so overwhelming, the numbers suggest that the negotiating team for the deputy sheriffs did not support the tentative agreement that they had signed. Indeed, they voted against the tentative agreement they had signed. The negotiations, I think everyone agrees, are now over. The association has formally requested even more mediation, and staff is recommending that mediation not be accepted on behalf of the county, given the history of the negotiations and the prior futile attempt to use an outside mediator. I'd like to make, address a couple of final issues. First, recent public statements by the association. The association has recently said that the county board will impose a contract. The law authorizes the board to unilaterally adopt its last proposal, but it is not imposing a contract. A contract is a bilateral document agreed to by two parties. This is not a contract. It is a unilateral adoption explicitly authorized by state law, the Myers-Millieus-Brown Act. There has also been a concern expressed by, in the public, by the association that other county employees may have their cuts restored at the end of their contract or after some period of time. And the deputies were quoted as saying, "That's all we want, the opportunity to have the cuts." And they are willing to agree to some cuts. They want them restored. But actually, they have gone further than that. They don't want to be treated like other employee groups. They are insisting that at the end of the contract, one year or two years, whatever is agreed, if there were a contract agreed, that all of their cuts would be guaranteed restored. That's not something that any other employee group has. Cuts made now are subject to future negotiations. If two years from now, this would have been the tentative agreement, we are negotiating for a new contract, or one year from now, and the economy is better, obviously, there is the opportunity to reconsider whatever the cuts are. But that's not what the deputies have insisted on. They have insisted that all cuts be restored, and they be brought back to the status quo before any cuts were made. That's not the way other employees are being treated. The final sort of public statement issue that I have seen, others on the management team have seen, there is an allegation that the county, by taking the action we are recommending you take, is reducing benefits. You can see, I think, from the staff report, staff is not recommending the reduction of benefits. Staff is recommending the sharing of costs. Let me give you a specific example, too. With regard to retirement costs, the county right now pays 33.86% of salary for the deputy's retirement. That includes 9% of salary, that is the employee's share of the contribution to the state retirement system. In other words, the county's paying all of the employee share. What we're suggesting is, don't change the retirement plan, same retirement plan, but the employees would pay 2.5% of the 9%, that's the employee contribution. In other words, the county would still pay 31.5%, but the employees would share by paying 2.5. Same true on health insurance. The county is suggesting that 80% of the premium be paid by the county, 20% of the premium be paid, not a change in the benefit, but a change in the cost sharing. We heard one report that somebody was saying, "Well, that's a 20% cut in salary." No, it's 20% of the premium of insurance. It's not a 20% salary reduction. It is part of the insurance sharing that the county is proposing. Final point, and this is, this is not related to the public statements or the public issues out there, but is an important point, I think, for the board and the public to keep in mind. There is a very interesting dynamic in Placer County with regard to wage increases. The county of Placer has a charter provision. It's called Measure F., and that's the way it's referred to in the staff report. Measure F. mandates a salary increase based on a certain formula for the deputy sheriffs, the sworn officers, for no other county employees, but for the sworn officers. It is not negotiated. It is mandated by the county charter. This year, in February of 2009, retroactive to January 1, 2009, that mandated automatic pay increase was 6.3%, which in this economy is striking. The consequence of this Measure F. automatic pay increase, there are two of them. First, it certainly affects the dynamics of negotiations of the bargaining table. They don't even have to negotiate for a wage increase. It's all the other stuff that we're talking about because their wage increase is already set by that formula. The final piece, the final consequence of this Measure F. increase is the fact that although the deputies have indicated a willingness to accept some temporary cuts, they want them to go away in one year or two years, please understand that the cuts they are talking about are not cuts to the take-home pay in a net negative sense for the deputies. All the cuts they are willing to address, indeed, to a degree what the county's doing, is to make for less of an increase. They're talking 5% cuts. They got 6.3% in, in February. Other employees in the county have a net cut. The deputies still get an increase from the staff recommended one-year proposal that staff is urging you to adopt. Based on all of this, it is the staff's recommendation. Based on all of this, it is the staff's recommendation that you adopt the staff report, unilaterally adopt the final one-year proposal, and decline the invitation to go through even further mediation. I don't have anything further unless there are questions from the board.
Thank you. You don't have anything, do you? Okay, we'll open up now. Does somebody want to officially speak for the Deputy Sheriff's Association? I'll allow you 15 minutes if you want to speak for the group, and then what the remaining time, individuals can speak.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Josh Tinn, I'm the president of Deputy Sheriff's Association. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Wegant, Supervisor Euler, Supervisor Holmes, and Supervisor Montgomery. Two sides of every story, I guess. Mr. Whitmore gets paid very well to do his job, he does a very good job at it. Kind of deviate from my notes a little bit, just hearing some of those comments, and we answer to the people. People vote you folks in. You folks hire Mr. Miller, who in turn hires Mr. Boyle, who hires these folks to hire him. So that's first and foremost, the bureaucracy we've been dealing with as far as a contract goes. With that being said, since the fall of 2006, we've been negotiating with your designees for a labor contract. The DSA has made tireless efforts to assist your CEO with obtaining a responsible and fiscally sound labor contract. Recently, my membership voted down his last proposal, and I can understand why. Unfortunately, we've come to this. We did propose something that had some cuts. It saved some money, it would have hit my membership. It was disheartening when we returned back to a meeting and told, "Hey, we have a deal as long as you," in essence, "got out what, what the proposal was." It's status quo for the way this has been going on for the past three years, just like saying, "You know what? I love your suit, except for your jacket and your pants." And unfortunately, we've come to this. Your board will vote on whether or not to impose a labor contract that will save approximately, I'm told, a little over $650,000, according to the workshop a couple months ago, or a couple weeks ago. That's in a multimillion dollar budget. We offered you, according to your own figures, $1.6 million in savings over two years. On a positive note, though, I'd like to thank the citizens, business leaders, et cetera, for showing their support, as well as fellow law enforcement members from Northern Alliance of Law Enforcement, SAC DSA, SAC POA, Roswell POA, Lincoln POA, Fraternal Order of Policing, Sacramento County Probation Association, West SAC POA, Stockton POA, Eldorado DSA, the list goes on. Thank you for your support. We all understand and feel the reality of these economic times, and all we're asking is for the voice of reason to be heard, have a third-party mediator, listen to all our differences. When we last met with the county, Mr. Miller sat in as a third party to hear the differences, which is puzzling when the direction is coming from Mr. Miller. I don't see how he can be impartial. Nevertheless, we're not asking to be treated special. We're no different than the mechanic at the county garage, we're no different than the secretary processing the paperwork or anything of that nature. Our job is a little different, but we love what we do and will continue to do it for the good of the order. All we're asking is that everybody pull together, private and public sector, so that we can get through these times. And with that, I think there's some people that might want to address you. But other than that, I have any, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer those. And just regarding the savings, I can go on a list of things that we've offered. The proposals don't lie, we have them, we have them archived, and you folks do as well. I'll share any one of them with you folks and go through the numbers that, that your folks have costed out. They don't lie, so.
Supervisor Euler?
Josh, thank you for your comments this morning. The decision before us today, it's essentially a delay of the decision that we had before us a month or so ago, is do we have a one-year operating agreement that we essentially sign? And a month or so ago, this board directed our negotiators back to the table to meet with you, meet with your group. At the request of your group, at the request of Sheriff Bonner, our board received numerous calls directly, I know I got mine at home on the weekend, asking that we take that step. I believe we acted in good faith and we did that. And our folks got back to the table and sat down with you. And your folks walked away from the table with an agreement that you said you could support and you would take back to the membership and request their support. So today, you're asking for us to not make the decision staff is recommending, you're asking for us to go to mediation. My question for you is, forget the, the distant history, forget the, the fact we've been to mediation before and it didn't work. My question for you is, given that we sat at the table, our representation sat at the table with you less than a month ago, and you said that we had something you could support, and yet the final vote was approximately 178 no's and one vote in the affirmative, which means that your board didn't support it. What hope, what, what can you give us, the board of supervisors, that this time, if we agree to go sit down, you'll really negotiate in good faith?
Good question. I think it's been answered already, and that was given prior to us meeting with the county last. That was a proposal that we wholeheartedly could have supported, thought could even pass. See, there's two different, there's what we try and negotiate, we're not mind readers, I don't know if our membership will support. And that's my comment about the suit. We went, we gave a proposal again, you know, the 11th hour, only, that was on a Friday, we gave it over the weekend, only to meet Monday with your staff, and again, it was, "Hey, we have a deal if you X, Y, and Z." And it was either refuse that, and in essence, we would impose on our own membership, or we would unilaterally, force your hand unilaterally, whatever the legal, I'm sorry, I don't have a legal degree, whatever that terminology was. Or we can put it to our membership for a vote. We decided to let them decide on that, knowing the ramifications that we could be here today. So what we would support and what we think would even pass, and again, I might be speaking out of turn, because cops get a little crazy sometimes, but is what we had already offered. And that's in the, that's what, according to your numbers, 1.6 million over two years, it was $835,000 per year. It was in the form of us sharing. And, and there's one thing to correct, as far as all of, everything going away, all of the provisions, not true. The medical contribution that we were willing to go to, that, that management and the other labor organization has, that was to continue on past the duration of this contract. So that's one point of clarification. But again, I don't want to stand up here and.
No, and I appreciate that. And I just want to be clear that I'm, I'm, you've brought now up the analogy of the suit a couple of times. I want to be sure I'm clear on something. Your, your words seem to infer, and I don't want to imply, but, excuse me, the other way around, your words seem to imply and I don't want to infer, that somehow, what you agreed to isn't what was ultimately presented to the membership. What I, what I think I hear you saying is that when you agreed to certain terms with our management that you could take back to your membership, those weren't the terms that were ultimately taken back to your membership?
What we presented versus what was discussed at the meeting.
No, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not asking what you presented. What I'm, what I'm, what I heard said, and if this is incorrect, please correct it. What I heard said was you and your negotiating group left the table with terms that you said you could support and take back to your membership. Did those terms change from the time you left the table?
No, it was terms that we said that we could bring to our membership for a vote, in lieu of us arbitrarily deciding at that meeting not to take it to a vote.
So you voted for terms that you, yourself then, didn't think you could support?
Whether I could support it or not, I mean, I have my own membership voice, as far as a member, and how it affects me and my family. But you can ask any one of my members, did I have a biased opinion on it? I did not share that whatsoever.
And, and I think what I'm getting at here is you're asking us to enter a, what could be a lengthy process, and before mediation. And before we enter that process, we have to know that there is some glimmer of hope that could lead to something that we haven't already covered. And what I'm struggling with, and where I might have historically or previously been inclined to entertain the request for mediation, is when your management group sits there and says, "We can support this, and we're going to take it back to our membership," and the clear numbers of the vote show that you guys didn't support it.
Well, again, and I think that's where the wires are getting crossed. What my management could support, what we could support, was brought, it was changed, and it was, we either take that to a vote, what was changed, or, or not. And if we walked away from the table, then we would have been here two, three weeks ago. I don't know if I'm making.
That's all right, I'll seek clarification afterward. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, regarding the lengthy process, it could be lengthy, but we're just asking a 30-day, a 30-day window. It's either going to happen or it's not. We think we're closer than, I like to think we're closer than, than perhaps maybe your staff thinks, but that's all we're asking for, is a 30-day window.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Josh.
Hello, my name's Andrew Scott, I'm the vice president of Deputy Sheriff's Association. Thank you for the time that you've given us to speak today. As far as Mr. Whitmore's comments, I understand why he's so highly paid and his attorney, because I didn't recognize from what he said what occurred. But I think you're making a mistake retiring, you're doing a great job. No offense, Mr. Labouf. I have a couple of notes that I prepared, and then I'd like to address the issue that you brought up. Over the course of the last year, we've seen and heard your debates regarding public safety spending in Placer County. While this board has generally supported equipment and buildings, which we greatly appreciate, that is only a fraction of the equation that we're talking about when we speak of public safety. When you build a house, the most important consideration isn't the hammer or the nail gun, it's the carpenter. Without a quality craftsman, the hammers are relevant. With public safety, the same is also true. You cannot be a champion of public safety without supporting the practitioner. The practitioner is the most important element. When your deputies comfort a rape victim, when they tell a parent their child has been killed, when they investigate crimes of brutality, the affected victims don't care about the buildings or equipment they carry on their belt. They care about the quality of the deputy that's standing in front of them, helping them through a difficult time. While those things that were provided are important and appreciated by your deputies, they pale in comparison to what is truly important. Your deputies are the most vital element of local government's greatest responsibility. Even with this in mind, your deputies, your sheriff sergeants, your investigators, your detectives, tentatively offered to accept cuts to their salaries to be part of this government's economic solution. But when the economy's health returns, those sacrifices should be restored to those deputies. Lastly, the city of Auburn management showed leadership by leading the way in sacrifices. Here, our CEO, whose salary dwarfs what a deputy makes, is unwilling to make those same contributions in the medical area that we're being asked to take. I ask you, where's the leadership in that decision? I ask you here to show leadership today and refuse to impose a contract on your deputies that exceeds what other employees are asked to sacrifice. We're asking for mediation because we do believe it would be fruitful. We have the most difficult job in the county, among the most difficult job in the county, don't make our sacrifices the most difficult as well. Mr. Euler, when you discussed the issue regarding the tentative agreement, we did ask that you return to the table for a last attempt before you imposed upon us, and we appreciate that your willingness to do that. We came to the county at that meeting with an agreement that we felt the county would accept. We felt we went, that we went the length of the field in trying to reach an agreement that this board would be willing to accept. However, when we presented that to, when we presented it to the board, we, we had a positive response to it. And I think that's what Josh is referring to, as far as the, we like your proposal, but except for the jacket, or the suit, except for the jacket and the pants. That's how, that's how it felt to us. The county says, "We think this is a great agreement, except for," and added conditions to that agreement that we felt would make passage much more difficult. However, your, the Deputy Sheriff's Association board didn't feel that that was our decision to make out of hand to reject that contract. We felt our membership deserved to have a say in what happened to their paycheck and to their families. So we did sign a tentative agreement to present that in an unbiased manner, which we absolutely did. It was completely up to the deputies and the members represented by the DSA to, whether they felt that that was a sacrifice that they were willing to make on a long-term, permanent basis. Obviously, they felt, almost unanimously, that they weren't unwilling to, that they were not willing to make that to such a great extent. So, yes, we did sign a tentative agreement, but we believe it's these people out here that have the right to make the decision on how they're affected financially in this contract.
Okay, so then, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Are, are you saying, as, as Josh seemed to, that at no point when you were breaking up in your meeting with our negotiating team, after you had come to terms on something you were going to take back your membership, at no point was it represented by your negotiating group that this was something you could take back and support?
We supported what we brought to you, and we would go to our membership and, and say that we believe this is a good deal. The, I don't know if these were poison pills that were inserted by whomever made that decision, but once that was done, it was plainly obvious to us that if we didn't accept those issues in the tentative agreement, then it would be out of our hands, out of these people's hands whether or not that contract would, or that tentative agreement would get, whether they get the vote on that. We felt that was imperative that they make the final decision on this.
So again, my question, I understand that what you brought to the table you felt you could support.
Yes.
What you're saying is, when this particular meeting was over, and you had agreed to take this proposal back to your membership, did you or anybody else on your, on your negotiating team represent that you could support this, that you would support moving forward with this agreement?
I did not say that I could support this agreement. I said that we presented it to the membership, and I did not hear any of our other members said that they would advocate for that tentative agreement.
So then, what you're saying is you think that you guys were pretty much lockstep in opposition to take into this particular agreement?
I was. I mean, I, I signed a tentative agreement, I believe that they should make that decision. But I did not support the provisions that the county added to that tentative agreement, personally, that we, that we were basically signed a TA to.
Okay. And you honestly believe, sitting here today, that based on the history that we've had to get to this point, 30 days for mediation will solve this?
I think, I think we are very close. I think the issues that, that are separating what I would support personally, obviously, I, I can't make a decision on, on the membership, they have to make that decision for themselves. From what I've heard and what I would support, what we gave the county was not that different financially, if at all, than what the county proposed. It was the issues that they inserted, that the county inserted in permanency, that, and reopeners in relatively just a few months that I personally had a problem with, and I think that most of the people, most of our members had an issue with.
You know, I, I, I sit here, understanding your role as a representative. I personally find it very hard to believe that I, as an elected representative, would acquiesce to something, act in affirmation of something in a meeting, that I knew I was not going to be able to then turn around and publicly support. I just, maybe I.
Well, I think, I think the board acts many times in the issue of their constituents as opposed to their own personal belief system, or, or their belief on a typical subject. I, I would be very doubtful that everyone here always acts on what they feel is best versus what they feel their constituents would desire.
That, that's true. However, I also know that every vote that I cast is a vote that I'm willing to stand up and publicly defend and support that vote after I cast that.
I absolutely support our decision to sign a tentative agreement, based on the fact that it was these people's.
Don't agree with the agreement that you were going to present.
I don't think it was a good agreement, but I think it's up to them to make that decision.
Okay.
And in that respect, I absolutely do support giving them the decision to make that's going to affect them so significantly in their pocketbook.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we will do three minutes and will conclude at 11:30.
Mine will be very brief. My name is John Peretti, I'm a, I'm the board director for the Placer County Sheriff's Department Association. I wasn't in the first round of negotiations, I started in, in the 2009 negotiations, and to, more directly to, to some of your questions, I, I felt a little bit like the very first day I was there, that they stuck a gun to our head and said, "This will be done by July 1st." And quite honestly, I was shocked. I've been on, with the sheriff's department for 17 years, I've been on several board of directors, I've been involved in several negotiations. And I was, I was pretty shocked that they had set a hard, fast date of when this had to be done and when we had to make a decision. When it started in 2006, nobody said, "Hey, by July 1st, this is going to be done, win, lose, or draw." It was because the economy changed and it was very clear. I was part of that decision of taking the contract to the membership. I personally was completely on the fence about the contract when we walked out of there. I supported completely bringing it to the membership, they needed to see it, they needed to see what the offer was. That's our job here. Your job. Your job as county supervisor is quite a bit different than our job as a director on the board. Our job is just to take this information, bring it to them, and let them decide. That's all I have, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jeff Potterm, I'm an association member and prior president of the association. I just wanted to direct something that you had mentioned, Mr. Euler, regarding our board and what they brought to the association. They brought whatever it is that you guys came up with to us, and they presented it as unbiased and as unfair as I have ever seen. And as a past president, I would never bring a contract, me personally, to my association that requires my members to take a four to five hundred dollar pay cut a month, permanently. I wouldn't bring it. So I give kudos to Josh and the board for actually bringing it to the association. I was at the meeting, and we basically hung that board out to dry as an association because of what they brought. They did it out of integrity and respect, I think, to the board, because you guys did agree. And Josh and the board have brought that up, they said, "Hey, the board's agreeing with us, we're going back and forth here, but we need to bring this out to you guys," and they brought it. And they brought it with integrity. So you need to know that, and I don't appreciate the fact that we're accused of doing something wrong here as an association. It's not the case here, okay? It was brought with integrity, and they had no bias when they brought it. We threw them out to the sidewalk, as association. We threw them out because my pay cut monthly will be four hundred and twenty-three dollars, based on the numbers that I got back from your proposal. I don't want a four hundred and twenty-three dollar a month pay cut, and that's with a ten percent medical, not the twenty. So we're looking at between probably four fifty to five hundred dollars a month with a twenty percent cut in the medical. That is a heavy cut for anybody to take. May not for you guys, but for anyone in this association, almost five hundred dollars a month is a healthy pay cut to take. And Mr. Whitmore measured, said something about Major F. The voters have gone through that three times now, and said it stays. We tried to get rid of it twice. Voters said it stays, we have no, we have no say in that. It is what it is. A five hundred dollar a month pay cut is too much for any, you're asking too much for any cop in Placer County. We're one of the lowest-paid agencies right now in the county. Rockland, Roseville, we're on par with Lincoln, CHP. One of the lowest-paid agencies in the region, for that matter. And now we wanna go further down from that? I'm just appealing to you as a board to do the right thing, and not take four hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars a month out of my paycheck.
Good morning, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Mark Salvon, I'm the President of the West Akmore Police Officers Association. Just recently, in this last twelve months, we have, our association has met with the city and have come to an agreement, a three-year labor agreement with our city in very tough economic times. I'm here to tell you that in 1990, a contract was imposed upon our police officers' association. To this day, I deal with the long-term effects of imposing a contract on a police officers' association. The amount of resentment and distrust that that one, that one action caused for our city reverberates today. And I find it hard to deal sometimes with members that remember those, those times. It appears to me that the Deputy Sheriff's Association is only asking for a thirty-day window to mediation. I think that as elected officials, it would be reckless on your part not to allow that to occur. You folks are elected into your positions by vote, and you kinda need to go back to that as you're dealing with these deputy sheriffs. This is a very, very large item for you to consider. That's really all I have to say, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
My name is Lori Benton Court, and I have been employed by the Sheriff's Office for the past twenty-six years. I come in contact with people that you never will. Homeless, mentally ill, child molesters, rapists, murderers, people who abuse their children and the children that they leave in the wake of their destruction. Each and every one of these people I treat fairly and with respect. Certainly not because they necessarily earn or deserve it, but because the citizens of this county expect it, and because the badge the sheriff entrusted, to me, demands it. Because this badge not only comes with power and authority, but also responsibility. Because when you're in a position of power and strength, you have to play fair. And with the office of county supervisor and CEO, also comes power and authority. And how you choose to use this power and authority lies with you. I've been a member of the Deputy Sheriff's Association negotiating team for the, for the past three, three years, and during this time, our association has been without a contract. And during these negotiations, you have employed divisive tactics, which have resulted in ninety members leaving our association. You have surface bargained with no intention of ever ratifying a contract because you quote, intend to give PPO the same treatment when their contract expires next year. You have given the association incomplete and inaccurate costing sheets, which are applied differently to the county than they are to the employees. You have provided inaccurate information to the media regarding salary costs for association members. You have refused to accept offers from the association, which include almost two million dollars in cost savings for the county. And you have refused to even meet and negotiate with the association over a six-month period while we were without a contract. In July, the Sheriff's Association, which is a small group of two hundred and thirty county law enforcement professionals, submitted a two-year concessionary contract proposal that would have saved this county almost two million dollars over the next two years. Our members offered to pay five percent of their retirement contributions for the next two years, more than any other county employees, and to reduce our medical benefits. But you refused this offer, and you kept asking for more, wanting to make the five percent contributions permanent, even when the economy improves, and you wanted to reduce our medical benefits even further, more than any other county employees, even further than yourselves. What you don't even realize is that your actions are so transparently punitive in nature that everyone can see right through them. Instead of today, you're asking to impose a contract that will take about five to six hundred dollars a month out of each and every officer's paycheck. Officers who are here each and every day, all day and all night, on holidays and weekends for the citizens of this county. Officers who would literally run into a burning building without thinking twice to save their life-
Lori, thank you, your time is up. There's other people behind you wanting to talk to you.
I'm Dan Bulgardis, I'm a sergeant with the Sheriff Department, and I know each of you, and each of you know me. And the times that I've talked to you as individuals, we've always discussed things that are reasonable. I like to think I'm pretty reasonable with things. And in piggybacking on what Josh and Andrew and Lori was just saying, I'm speaking for me right now, and I'm speaking for the membership that I personally spoke with about the process that's going on right now. I think what's frustrating is that we're arguing about giving back the county money from the membership. And I don't think, myself and the people that I spoke with are not wanting to give up any money or make concessions because of the economic times right now. I'm a taxpayer, and you work for me, and I live in this county. And as a board, I would expect you to be reasonable with the employees that you govern. And I feel like we're arguing about giving money back from the membership. It's not that anybody, nobody doesn't want to give up their piece of the pie to help out during these tough economic times. It's that the board, as Josh said, wants to put, or not the board, whoever crafted this document, wants to put these poison pills in there, and that's what's getting the people frustrated, is that it's the permanency of this whole thing, and it's not reasonable. So it's reasonable what Josh and Andrew said they agreed to, but then after they get the final draft and present it to us, it has these poison pills in there that creates this permanency to it. And that's where everybody has said, "Time out." This is concessions that we're gonna make and negotiate to and agree to during the tough economic times. But we don't want it to be permanent, so that when this all gets better, that we go back to the pay that we're currently earning right now, and we deserve that pay. That's why you pay us the current pay that we make. We've negotiated for years to get to where we're at, and to just say, "We're gonna give that up, and then it'll be permanent," then we're going backwards. So all the things that we negotiated to in past contracts that we gave up, that we got to the current benefits that we have today, and now we're gonna give up, how many takeaways would that be over how many contracts over the years? I think what they're asking is, is, "Take out some of the poison pills," and, and I think we'll be more reasonable and flexible. So I'm speaking for me, that I will be more reasonable and flexible and vote yes. I voted no, I thought it was not reasonable. So if you come back and we can work on some of these little points that Josh and Andrew are discussing, I think you'll get a lot better agreement from the association. From me, you will, and I think things will move forward and get better for everybody, and we can agree to giving back money to help out the county.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good morning, members of the board. My name's Ken Delphian, I live in Colfax. I'm not a, I'm not a deputy. I do volunteer with them, it's one of the first things that we did when we moved up here in 2001, 2002. We volunteer with the department. These men and women who serve in these uniforms, every day, every day, they put their lives on the line. Not in just, not, not just in our communities, but last November, I attended the awards dinner, a recognition program in Rockland. And in the back of the program, I saw at least, at least a hundred of them had served also in our military. Some of them are even going on, have been recalled, they have passed, have been recalled to Baghdad. So they're not only putting their lines, their lives on the line for our country, they're putting our lives on the line, their lives on the line for the county, as Deputy Spoken did just last couple of weeks ago. The pay cut, combined with, with, with a refusal to restore any kind of pay, pay loss when the economy turns around, is like a double slap in the face. These people have families, you know, we all have families to support, and they are willing to take some cuts as they, as they stated, and we can support that. You know, I just, I'm not, I know others want to talk. So Supervisor Montgomery, you're my representative. You opened up this meeting, this segment of the meeting with a beautiful statement about what they did and what they mean to this community. I know you said the same thing at a WAC back meeting that got back to me as well. I ask you, as my, as my representative, to support the thirty-day, more, thirty-day cooling off period that they want, and go back to the table one more time and see if things change. Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Don Gilbertson. I'm a Newcastle resident. My family has been in Newcastle for four generations in Placer County. I've been around Placer County long enough to remember Officer Rock Holmes when he worked in Roseville in my encounters as a youth, and he was a good, tough, and fair street cop back then. I'm here to express my support for my deputies who work this area, that patrol the rural backroads where my family lives and where we call home. In my opinion, public safety should be your top priority as a, period. As a Placer County resident, I elect my officials with the hopes that they will be reasonable and fair. Mr. Holmes, you are my representative, and I hope that you will be reasonable and fair. Down the road in Sacramento, also, I wear several hats. Besides being a Newcastle resident, which is, Placer County resident is near and dear to my heart, I'm also a police officer. I work for the Sacramento Police Officer, Police Department, I'm also with the Sacramento Police Officer Association, also the treasurer of the Northern Alliance of Law Enforcement NAIL, which Placer County DSA is a member of. Down in Sacramento, where the budget problems are even worse than here in Placer County, their city leaders were able to work out an agreement with their officers and to help out with their budget problems and to save jobs. Those leaders are seen as partners in, in public safety, and that's how we view them. In closing, I hope that you will reject staff's recommendations and choose the reasonable option, and show to the residents and to the deputies that public safety is your top priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Supervisors, I'm Kevin Mickelson. I'm President of the Sacramento County Deputy Sheriff's Association. I'm also President of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Seven in Northern California, and I stand here as a representative of the California Coalition of Law Enforcement Associations, which represent eighty thousand members up and down the state. I'm going to limit my comments to probably some issues that you had, Supervisor Euler, on the negotiation process. I recently negotiated a five-year contract for the DSA in Sacramento. And unbelievably, during that process, I found that the county exec and the negotiator were not presenting what we had on the table to the Board of Supervisors. After learning about that, I set up a meeting with all five Board of Supervisors, and after going through the process step by step, I received a five to nothing vote from the Board of Supervisors that was one hundred percent the DSA's proposal. Now, back in 2005 and 2006, I was on the negotiation team then, and it was a process much like what you're seeing today. And we TA'd on a lot of the, on a lot of the items. There were several that we just couldn't come to resolution on. Now, we could have chosen to take the county's last, best, and final offer as a team to the membership for a vote, much like the DSA up here did. It would have been improper for us as a team then, as it would have been now, for us to beat the drum either in for or against that, that proposal. We chose not to take that proposal to the, the team five, four years ago. What we did chose to do, choose to do was go to a neutral third party. And I think that's really what's, what the question is, can a neutral third party really add to what's been going on up here? And I would say yes. We had two informal meetings with the neutral third party. That neutral third party spoke to both the county and to the DSA representatives, and we were able to come to an agreement. The process was, it was two meetings, they were short meetings. We came to terms, we took all the tentative agreements back, and it wasn't a unanimous vote by any means, but the membership ratified that vote. Each of you got to the position that you're in because you have some sense of reasonableness. And all I'm asking is for you to use that reasonableness, give the deputy sheriffs that thirty-day window, have a neutral third party come in, they may hear something they don't like, the county may hear something they don't like, but at least then you'll have a neutral third party advising you on what you, what your options are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Deputy Ken Skogan. I've been a sheriff with the Placer County Sheriff's Department for three years. I moved my family here about five years ago for the quality of life. I left another agency to come to work for Placer County for the quality of life. In three years I've worked here, I've seen morale steadily decrease with my deputy sheriffs, the men and women you see behind me. It's hard enough to work in a career as demoralizing as this due to the stress that we encounter every day. Park workers aren't asked to pick up dead bodies. Sanitation workers don't fight, physically fight. A parolee who has beat his girlfriend or wife and then fled when the police show up. A secretary doesn't run into a Bernie building when he hears the screams of a son, my mother's in there. These workers are all vital to the county and the operation, you guys all know that, I'm not slamming any of them. However, what you see before you represents over two hundred men and women who perform all these tasks and make split-second decisions every day. Having been given the authority to take life, these men and women behind you preserve it more often than not. They save lives before they take. And yet, we're the only part of the county who are being asked to take a pay cut. We're not the same as any other county employee. We're not the same at all, we do these things tirelessly, we get phone calls in the middle of the night, all hours of the night, disturbing our family, disturbing, if, my infant child's sleeping, can you come in and cover? There's a guy jumping off the bridge, our hostage negotiator's coming in, our SWAT operator's coming in, all hours of the night. And yet, we're gonna be, five hundred dollars is gonna be taken from my paycheck. You might recognize me, I went into a burning home and saved a woman's life, and I tried to hide it, I didn't want people to know. Why? Because it's what I do. My wife wanted to strangle me when she found that out. My wife wanted to strangle me when she found that out. And now, $500 is going to be taken from my pay cut or from my paycheck? She ought to be real happy next time. And I find it really funny, too, that Prop F is being brought up. That's not the issue here. That's not the issue at all. Prop F was voted on. The voters of this county decided that's what they wanted. That's not the issue here, gentlemen, ma'am. It's not the issue at all. Thank you for your time.
Members of the board, thank you for your time. My name is Sean Rosner. I'm a deputy sheriff of Placer County. I want to really quickly echo what Ken said about Proposition F. Proposition F is a cost of living increase that is still well below industry standards. And so, I'm not going to stand up here and speak to you in a loud offended voice as if the money that's being talked about here is coming out of my pocket. I'm going to talk to you just as a guy, a guy who bought a home at the wrong time, who's upside down in it and who can't afford this pay cut. I face being foreclosed on if this, if this contract is approved. I want to say to Supervisor Weigant, you were here and you gave an award to your friend and rightfully so, but one of the words that you said was, "Do what you have to do to pay the bills to make ends meet." And Supervisor Euler, you said that these are tough economic times, so I don't believe that either one of you said these words lightly. Supervisor Montgomery, you talked about making sound business decisions and as a taxpayer in this county, I expect and require that you all do that. But I would also like to say that you work with Supervisor Chairman Rockholm, who did this job, this job which is a busy, sometimes exciting, sometimes terrifying job that takes a lot out of a person and it takes a lot of a person to give to this job. It's a job that can be very rewarding and it's a job that in these tough economic times facing what we're talking about here today, can actually be a little disheartening. This job can't afford distractions and this is why I bring up Supervisor Rockholm. He worked in a job where he knows you can't afford distractions. We already have enough distractions in our life, just as normal human beings, just like all of you folks. What we cannot afford is for further distractions that take away, that put us in a position where we're thinking about other elements of our lives when we're here trying to do the job for this community and then someone gets hurt or perhaps worse. I understand that you folks have to make some tough decisions here. I ask for your reasonableness and your reconsideration. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Steve Frick. I'm a deputy sheriff. I've been employed by the sheriff's office since January of 1980 for five years as a reserve and February it'll be 25 years as a full-time sworn officer. I'm currently a coroner's investigator with the coroner's division. My brothers and sisters, they've all pretty much hit the nail on the head, reasonableness. In my almost 30 years carrying a gun and a badge, my decisions are predicated on reasonableness. As elected officials, obviously, you are the stewards of the county's money and the people who elected you into office. Be good stewards. Now's not the time to do things right. Now's the time to do the right thing. My cost sharing, I understand it's not a salary cut, would equate to approximately eight and a quarter percent of my net pay per paycheck. And it's about 600 bucks a paycheck, or excuse me, a month, I'm sorry. I don't know if I'll keep my house or not. It's not because of a bad loan, it'll be because of this. I ask you to step up to the plate and do the right thing. I'm willing to step up to the plate. I'll take one for the team, but I'd rather take an 80 mile an hour pitch than 100 mile an hour pitch. Thank you.
Gentlemen, my name's Scott Swanson. I grew up here in Auburn. This is my home. When I went to the police academy and I graduated, I wanted to work one place, right here, Placer County. I wanted to give back to my hometown. Many of my academy classmates are now employed here. I look around, there are a number of other people that I work with, fellow officers, that grew up in this area and they're giving back to their own area, to their own county. The other officers have chose to live here and to work here because this is a good place. It's a good place to raise a family. It's a good place to work. Tough economic times come. Everybody understands them. I've had to tighten my personal budget. It's just what happens. But it's very difficult to sit and swallow a pill of permanent takeaways, not temporary. My understanding, and I could be confused, but I don't believe the mandatory time off is a permanent thing for the PPEO. I was under the impression that that was a temporary measure for them, for cost savings taken to their association, voted on and approved to help in economic times. That's all we're asking for. If we have to take a hit, don't make it permanent. Treat us equally. Members of the board, you have to take a look at the motivation. Why are we here? Because we don't want a permanent takeaway. We've offered up takeaways. We've tried to be equitable. We've tried to be fair. We've tried to be reasonable. It's not working. We keep getting the same thing shoved back down our throats and it's a very bitter pill to swallow. Good leaders are respected. Good leaders lead by example, not from ivory towers. Please just be reasonable and give us an opportunity to step up and renegotiate. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking me after your 11:30 deadline. My name is Nuno Tavares. I'm an investigator with the District Attorney's Office and I'm also a board director with the deputy DSA's and I'm also a, was on the negotiating team. Real quickly, I'll tell you my story because I think my story is shared by some of the members in the DSA. Last month, I celebrated four years with Placer County. I came from another agency, which I had been there for 11 years and enjoyed my time incredibly there, respected and admired the leadership. I came to Placer County embracing in one hand uncertainty and a pay cut and in the other hand, I embraced optimism. And one thing that I heard from interviewing people before I came to Placer County, which was, "The management here is great. The county is very much pro law enforcement and you'll always be taken care of here from the law enforcement standpoint." And that was a huge decision upon coming to Placer County. Also, I live in Placer County and I like what's been done thus far over the years. So, after starting here, a few months down the road, I was driving to work. I have a baby at home, so the only time I really get to think to myself is on the way to work. And I was driving up and I thought to myself, you know, I'm very fortunate. I'm really happy to be at Placer County. The district attorney's got some great management. The environment was great and I was really happy with what I'm doing. I'm still very happy with what I'm doing. About a year ago, a year and a half ago, I was appointed to the, to the DSA as a board director and got involved in a negotiation process, one with, which I was very unfamiliar with. And it was quite the eye-opener. At that point, I became a little bit discouraged. I became discouraged on what happened just around the corner here, down the hall. And in my mind, I kept trying to remain optimistic that the county would come to an agreement with the DSA and that we'd walk away with a positive, a positive thing and put this away and do what we, we all signed up to do, which is our jobs. So, to sum it up again, this morning, I was on the way to work and again, I was thinking. I woke up this morning feeling a little bit discouraged that I'm starting my day fighting for the men and women of our organization rather than crime fighting, which is where my heart's at. And I looked at, when I started in Placer County, that those two things that I held in my right hand, I embraced optimism and the fact that the county would be there to support law enforcement. And when I got up here this morning, got out of my car and I told myself, I need to embrace the optimism again. I'm going to walk away here today, from here today, hoping that you folks have received a message that we just want to go back, try the 30-day mediation and give us an opportunity to move beyond this and allow us to go back and fight crime and put bad people away. It's what we signed up to do and let you folks go back to governing what you signed up to do. So, thank you very much for your time and thank you for the time of the Deputy Sheriff's Association. Thank you.
I will close the public portion and bring it back to the board. I would like to tell that young man that just spoke, when I woke up this morning, I just soon stayed in bed. Anyway, I'll bring it back to the board and who wants to start?
I just have a question regarding the pay cut. Isn't it a fact that the net pay will increase with Proposition F raises? Can anybody answer me that question?
With regard to 2009, the pay cuts that the county has suggested, that the association has suggested, together with Measure F, will mean they will still get an increase. There will be no pay cut. Future years will depend on the formula that generates the pay increases. The deputies are the only ones who receive a Measure F increase. And the comments about it being in the charter and voted on by the citizens, absolutely correct. That, that's just a given in, in the county government structure.
Robert?
Just a couple of comments. I have no idea what we're going to do, keeping in mind that the question is hand, is whether or not we go into mediation, but actually, I'm glad there's tremendous attendance here by the Deputy Sheriff's Association, but clearly, there's a huge amount of miscommunication occurring. I think Dick, more explicitly in discussions on this issue, one of my questions was, would there be an employee who is a member of the deputy sheriff, who in 2009, with the six-plus percent pay raise that is provided for in Prop F, would they actually take home, take home in their paycheck less money if in fact, we had completed the contract that was just voted on? And it's my understanding that there would not be a member of the Deputy Sheriff's Association who in fact, would not take home a paycheck that in fact, was bigger than it was before if this last contract was being voted on. So, if somebody has some calculations that are different than that, the board needs to hear that. And as some of you know, I've been available to meet with members of the Deputy Sheriff's Similarly, there's been several comments made to the effect that the Deputy Sheriff's Association was the only group that was asked to take a pay cut. Obviously, it's a matter of public record that that's inaccurate. There also is a reoccurring notion that has been presented that the participation that the board has sought by the Deputy Sheriff's Association in cost-sharing medical insurance and retirement is quote-unquote, "permanent." It will last as long as the contract lasts. Our obligation to the taxpayers as members of the Board of Supervisors is to make sure that we maximize taxpayers' dollars. Part of that is to try to attract the best and brightest people we can as employees here in the county, regardless of the position in the county, regardless of whether or not they're a secretary or a sworn officer. To do that, we have to meet the market wages. And over the long run, in future negotiations, if we don't meet the market conditions for those salaries and benefits, we won't be able to attract deputy sheriffs. That in fact, has occurred since I've been on the board during the last 15 years. And in fact, what we did was increase the package that we offered the Deputy Sheriff's Association. There's nothing permanent about any of the components in any contract. They would last as long as a contract lasts. Then obviously, there's a lot of emotional comments that have been made and I can certainly understand that. I've been here over the last three years in this last period of not having a contract with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. It's, all of us desire on the board that that not be the case, but it's important to keep in mind, too, that the staff that's here, Tom included, they work for the board. It's not the other way around. The board is very engaged in negotiation discussions. And again, if there's miscommunication about things like these take-home amounts in a paycheck, I'm happy to talk about those, but I want to see your calculations. And through that process, we actually can find exactly what is factual and what is not just emotional. And I will finish by simply saying, Laura, you mentioned comments about tactics. Well, I've been the victim of tactics for which I have an email that I can present to anyone who's willing to see it, from a reporter referring to information that was presented to them that attacked my personal integrity as a member of the Board of Supervisors. As a result, I guess, for them to try to write a story about me, to put pressure on me under these processes. And it's not going to work. It's not going to, my obligation is to the voters who elected me and hired me and I'm going to continue to try to work through this process as constructively as possible and get to a resolution that again, maximizes the value in the long run to the people who hired me.
Jennifer Kirk.
Question, Tom. The board asked today to move forward with finalizing the one-year agreement. Is there anything that precludes the two sides from getting together tomorrow and having conversations regarding a contract agreement?
No, there, no there is not. We would commence the contract negotiations that whenever the party wants to do so.
So, if the board moves forward today and we have the terms of the one-year contract, it allows for your office to adequately address what our '09-10 budget obligation is, to finally understand what our budget picture is going to be for the year, with this being one of the essential unknowns at this point. But the notion of getting together and talking about these things, the door doesn't close.
No, it does not.
Okay. Couple of things Robert touched on, but this notion of a permanent takeaway. What was being requested by the DSA wasn't a lack of a quote-unquote, "permanent takeaway," but rather a guarantee of a reversion in compensation to what existed before, thereby binding this board's hands in the future, taking that off the table. The action today does absolutely nothing to take off the table the discussion, should the economy improve, and please God, we all hope it will, does absolutely nothing to take off the table a future discussion about should that compensation that was reduced as a result of this action be reinstated. However, what was being asked of us would have been a permanent removal of that from any future negotiation. So, we're not saying that we're going to impose a permanent takeaway on you. Conversely, what was asked of us is that we permanently, after this, this short period, that we permanently remove those items from any future negotiations. And I don't think this board is prepared to do that today. I heard mentioned Prop F is not the issue. I'm sorry, when we're sitting here as employers for the county, total cost of employment is the issue. And we see this year, average cost to employ a county employee, this is average countywide, $104,000 a year is what we spend in Placer County as the average cost of employment, $104,000 a year. And a 6.3% increase on an annual basis, yes, that is, that is part of the issue. Now, you may not want to hear this, but the deputy sheriff's average is actually closer to $120,000 a year that it costs to employ. If you take all the employees in the DSA unit, or excuse me, within the public protection unit assigned to the sheriff's department, take that number, just divide by what we spend in salaries and benefits, it's roughly $120,000 a year. So, yes, Prop F is a big deal that we have to consider. We have to take into consideration. And the other bargaining unit did come back and vote to open up their contract and modify their contract to take an actual pay cut. What they will receive in their December '09 check is actually less than what they received in their December '08 check. It's a true cut, not a reduction in the, in the rate of growth. I heard the comment, "Lead by example." I hope you weren't talking to the five of us that are elected up here, who make $30,000 a year with no benefits. I really hope that wasn't directed at us. If any of you are so inclined to stick around, our next item is the finalization of our county budget. And in the budget this year, we are looking at a decrease of $81 million over last year. That includes $23 million in operating funds. That's what we pay people, the operating funds. That $81 million that we're cutting out of the budget this year is not another roughly $30 million higher, only because some folks back in Washington decided to ramp up printing prices and start throwing out money in the form of some public works-related things. So, what we're not seeing is a budget reduction in excess of $100 million, only $81 million, approximately a third of which is operating funds, which means paying people. None of these decisions are easy. And every one of you has a life story and I appreciate that. So, does every other employee that works for this county. And granted, we don't look other county employees in the eye and ask them to go into burning buildings. We don't do that. What you did was heroic, but you didn't do it because of a paycheck. But you didn't do it because of a paycheck, you did it because that's the character that you are. And this Board, since I first served in 1992, this Board has consistently set public protection at your level, at the district attorney's level, at probation level, as our highest priority. And you can look at funding charts that go back to the early 2000s, and they show public protection dollars spent in this county continuing to rise at a rate faster than all other general spending. The numbers are the numbers. This Board makes our decision based on what we believe is in the best interest of the taxpayers. And I personally, and I believe the rest of my colleagues concur, we believe that public protection is our number-one priority. But in order for us to meet the long-term obligation that we create, when we tell you, "If you come to work here, this is what you can expect when you retire," in order for us to meet that obligation and look you in the face and be honest about it, we're going to have to make some really tough decisions today that keep us a viable entity 10, 15 years down the road. So that when you are retired, hopefully enjoying it, we are able to keep the faith that was represented by our votes here today. So it's not easy for any of us. It's certainly not easy to have people that I know and respect stand in front of me and ask me not to make a decision. I believe we owe it, long-term, to you, that we start taking these steps today to address this issue, solve this problem, come to a new expectation of what we can afford collectively, and move forward together. And I think what you've heard from me is that it will be my direction, should the other Board members agree, that we continue to meet with the DSA. We have to have some numbers, we have to get finality to this, we have to put our '09-10 budget to bed, be able to move forward. But I am certainly open to meeting with the DSA, as I have, and continue conversations about, okay, what can we do now to make sure that we can keep the faith for you folks in the years to come?
Jennifer?
Well, a lot of what I was going to raise has either been asked and answered or elaborated One of the issues that I really wanted to address is, a number of people raised the issue of playing fair. And I agree, we do need to play fair. And I think it's important to realize that 90% of the staff, the employees here at Placer County, have already taken a direct hit to their paychecks. PPEO, management staff, confidential employees, the nonrepresented, have taken that hit. So when you say to me, "We need to play fair," I say the other 10% of employees need to play fair as well, and step up and take their hit as well. And you do see it as a hit. I understand that. But it is equitable. It is playing fair. It is stepping up to the same level as the rest of the employees at Placer County. And the reason that I ask that is because my responsibility is to the taxpayers of this county. We have to balance a budget. We can't have an unbalanced budget here. Part of balancing this budget is asking the 10% of folks who haven't taken a hit yet to do so. It's equitable, it's fair, it's something that I'm going to move forward with today. Thank you.
Jim?
Well, I have to agree with everything that's been said. Supervisor Yuler said it most eloquently. And the thing that concerns me is the long-term sustainability of our future obligations to our retirees. And the way it's set up now, I don't believe it's sustainable over the long term. And so that's basically where it comes down for me. We need to have some cost-sharing with our employees to help us maintain the long-term obligations of our retirees.
I just have a few comments. I have been on the street and worked... Some of you have still been here long enough that I've actually worked with you. I was in your shoes, I've done the negotiating on both. For the RPA, it was at the time, now it's the RPOA. I too have been a victim of bad tactics. I don't know where it came from, but our expenditures have been under scrutiny for over two years. My airplane ride keeps coming back over and over again, and I see Gus in the back, so maybe you'll get the facts right this time. I didn't order the charter airplane to pick me up. It was through the CEO's office, and I went to the meeting in Tahoe at their request because it was a very controversial issue, which the residents of Kings Beach were the recipient of me being there. When I found out the cost of that flight, it didn't take me long, I didn't get caught, it wasn't underhanded, my wife and I made the decision to pay. We wrote the check, some people have even checked to see if the damn check was cashed. That's how devious it's been. So maybe Gus this time will get it right. I paid the money back. Now, back to what we're hands here, we're in a no-win situation, no matter what we I don't read the papers, and I'm not going to make my decision based on the papers. The Auburn Journal landed on your side, Sacramento Bee landed on our side, so be it. I think we need to move on, we need to continue to meet, but we need to make the decision because our next item, we've got to put to bed this budget. October is going to blow up again, the state's going to blow up again, and we're going to be hit with some more. We've got a total of $26 or $27 million now.
In terms of our cuts?
A cut so far that we've been cut from the state, which we're probably going to receive more. Nobody appreciates... I want to rephrase that, because that's not necessarily true. I absolutely appreciate what you did. I was enjoying my anniversary weekend in Squaw Valley when the fire went down here in Auburn. I saw what Deputy Skogen did. I was going to send him an email, but I thought I would just wait and write him a note. I very much admire what he did. And Fox 40, they did a very nice report on it. He didn't do that because of the paycheck, he did it because, like Supervisor Yuler said, because of his integrity. Like all of you sitting out there, it's your integrity that's the reason you do that. I never was a cop because I was going to make a lot of money at it, but I did want a good retirement, and I wanted to be protected. I went out in '96 on an injury, and I went out on a medical retirement. The sergeants that are at Roseau PD today are making two and a half to maybe three times more than I went out at. And so, anyway, what it comes down to is I support you. There's going to be people who are going to walk out here and say, "We're never going to support him again." I received emails with that veiled threat, you know, "We supported you," and stuff like that. And I appreciate that support. But you know, if you don't think I can do this job, then don't support me again. But I'm going to have to do what I'm going to have to do. So let's move on with the vote.
Ms. Chairman, we have four different... five, excuse me, different requested items as it relates to the imposition of last best and final, and then moving on to the various modification of employment ordinances and the rest. What's Council's opinion in terms of the order?
I would request that you take them one at a time and vote on them separately.
Okay. I believe the first resolution is Page 28 and 29 of our staff report. I apologize, I don't think the resolution has a number yet, and so I'll just refer to it as Page 28 and 29. And this is the resolution to impose the county's July 1st, 2009, last best and final offer to DSA for a term that begins July 1, 2009, through June 30, 2010. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Mr. Chairman, I believe the second, if I can find it clicking through. We have a copy of the second resolution. We have a...
It's actually more than she can do.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Just in terms of the cover page of our staff item, introduce an ordinance suggesting the compensation and benefits to DSA-represented employees, I guess reflective of what we just adopted in terms of the previous resolution. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And then the adoption of a non-cotified ordinance implementing compensation benefits adjustments for DSA-represented employees, I believe reflective of what the actions we took on the first resolution. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution for the CalPERS, DSA safety employment retirement contribution to be adjusted, reflected as the, what was codified in the first resolution. Second?
For the record, that's two resolutions that are involved.
I'm sorry, no, just number four, just the safety, DSA safety, and then I'll do the DSA miscellaneous on the second one. So just the first one. So you have second? Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And then finally, the resolution for the CalPERS, DSA miscellaneous employment retirement contribution to reflect the terms adopted in the first resolution. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And you know what? When you guys leave here, I know you're going to be mad with us, but think about one thing. We went into this year knowing things were going to be bad, and went in with the... not to lay off anybody. Obviously, you don't care, but that's the way we went. Item number five. Well, it's a budget. Can't let the room clear. I get tired of the press. Hell, I'm in a house, I'm upside down, and what the hell's new? Okay, we're going to go ahead and proceed with our 11 o'clock timed item, County Executive Office. Mr. Bell has a presentation for us?
Yes, I do. Me myself together here. Everybody get a copy? Okay. All right. Good morning, members. Jeff Bell with the County Executive Office, and I'm here to present you with the final budget for its public hearing for 2009-10. The intent of the presentation here today is to provide you in a summary form, the final budget. Of course, this is the summary form for really the culmination of a series of budget presentations that we've had this year. This one being very summary in nature, and bringing together the proposed budget and the information that we brought before you on August 18th and 19th in the two-day budget workshops, bringing all that information together into a final budget package today in a summary, and taking that information and providing it to you in an easy-to-read package that should be available to you in the agenda before you, and in the slides that you'll see today. Now, of course, this is an amendment to the proposed budget, which is serving as our interim spending plan. That's the budget that your Board approved on May 26th, and has been serving as our spending plan, and that will, with the amendments that are going to be serving as our final budget, that'll be up for a vote on September 22nd. But beyond these technical adjustments that I'm describing to you, and the technical process that I'm talking to you about, the budget that's before you today is really more than that. It's really a continuum. A continuum of the actions that your Board has taken really since 2007. What am I talking about? I'm talking about the actions that this Board has taken throughout the years to keep this county on track while crisis has brewed around us, throughout the state and throughout the country. A series of actions directed by this Board beginning in 2007, the actions that were eloquently discussed during the Board workshops, actions that began with the implementing of hiring restrictions and the constraining of expenditures back in the fall of 2007, the actions that continued through December of 2008, right up until the actions that are proposed today. These actions have been a continuum of engagement by your Board throughout the years, constantly taking actions, adjusting our budgets, monitoring expenditures, constraining our expenditures where necessary, implementing Board procedures to ensure that this county stays on even footing as we adjust to, quite frankly, the calamitous both state and national economies. This budget closed the county budget... this county budget was closed with a prudent and phased-in use of reserves. It constrains expenditures without taking its eye off of its primary purpose, which is of course, serving the public. And it achieves significant savings without layoffs. It also provides funding for core programs, such as restoring $1 million for state cuts to child protective services and foster care, and it provides $1 million to backfill the cuts to the public safety sales tax revenues that have declined. And we'll be coming back to public safety sales tax revenue declines here shortly. And it would be an understatement to say that this budget has been balanced under significant challenges. And what do I mean by that? Well, beginning with revenues, significant revenue declines this year. Property taxes, 3%. Sales tax declines of 6%. Real property transfer tax, 4%. And public safety sales tax declines. And this isn't the first year. No, we talked about this again at the budget workshops as well. In fact, last year, while the property taxes were flat, sales taxes declined 18%. Real property transfer taxes, a 31%. Public safety sales taxes, 12%. So we have the 13% we just talked about, another 12% last year. And then supplemental property taxes, 58%. And if I could just stop on supplemental property taxes for a second. In '05-6, $10 million in supplemental property taxes were coming into our county budget. In '07, $8 million. '08, $6 million. And last year, $2.5 million. We're anticipating just under $1 million for '09-10 for supplemental property taxes. So in the span of four years, supplemental property taxes are going from $10 million to $1 million. So your Board has overcome significant revenue challenges in crafting this year's budget. On the expenditure side, in the capital area, new South Placer jail costs, total project costs, about $98 million, 59 million of which are in the '09-10 budget. But there are other capital projects that are going to need to be funded this year as well. Burton Creek, $6 million project, the Rockland Library, $5 million, and the Auburn Animal Shelter, another $3.8 million. We have significant growth in our county, and with that has come significant capital needs as well. Additionally, other operating cost pressures. Salary and benefits continues to be our most significant, our largest cost driver. These challenges, both the operating side and the capital side so far, those are the ones that we largely describe and drive within the county. We haven't even talked about the state challenges yet, which of course, are large. Proposition 1A, of course, that's an $11 million property tax hit. That's in addition to the 3% property tax reduction we just mentioned a few moments ago. Additionally, deferred payment of state reimbursements. What am I talking about there? Well, $3.5 million highway user transportation account. That won't be coming in now till January of 2010. Prop 42 funds, $1.9 million. That won't be coming until May of 2010. These are revenues that we would have normally anticipated receiving earlier. We're now going to have to front the use of those funds until we receive them much later in the fiscal year. Additional revenue reductions of $5.5 million in Health and Human Services. Do we expect future state deficits sometime in the fiscal year? More than likely. But your Board has met those challenges, and they are represented in the final budget that is before you today. Indeed, in final assessment, Placer County, despite these challenges, is well-prepared for the budget both this year and in the future, based upon the policies that you've laid out for us and that we have followed over the past several years. These are policies that we came back before... These are policies that we came back before you in February, came back again before you on August 4th, and have implemented as we prepared the final budget that's before you in the public hearing today. If we could turn now to a comparison of the 2008-9 final budget to the final budget that's recommended before you today. As was touched upon a few moments ago during the previous agenda item, we're looking at about an $81.5 million operating budget decline. $23.6 million of that's in the operating side, and about $57.8 million of that is in infrastructure. This is a final budget adjustment spreadsheet that shows you the operating funds. It should look very similar to what you saw during the workshops on the 18th and 19th. You'll see there in the general funds, about a 22 or, $22 million or 5.8% decline year over year. These operating funds overall are going down 4.4%. Infrastructure funds, again, about 17.8% decline for a 9.4% overall decline year over year in our operating budget, from 865.3 million to 783.9 million. Turning to staffing, our funded position allocations are going from 2,614 to 2,452, or a difference of 162. Our Placer County position allocations per 100 county population continues to decline. It's now at .81 per 100. And now turning from, shifting now from a comparison of final budgets, shifting from the '08-'09 final budget to the '09-10 final budget, we'll now turn to the proposed '09-10 budget to the final '09-10 budget. Again, this is a worksheet that we showed you in the budget workshops. This is truing up our estimates for the proposed budget into what we would now show you as the recommended final budget. This is the $7 million difference, for example, in the general fund from 361.8 million to 354.8, or a 2% continued decline. The total budget goes up slightly from 769 to 783, or a 1.9% increase. That's largely due to some increases in revenues there in the infrastructure area and some carryover year over year. And the, and again, these are some, this next slide is also a slide you saw in the previous presentation, but by way of review. You see that we started with the sources of funds of $361.9 million. Our carryover fund balance, I'm sorry, carryover fund balance came in higher than anticipated, again, at almost $10 million there, 9.7 million, due to the policies that your board has laid out for the county and to the savings in departments. We came up with $33.7 million in carryover versus $24 million, which largely offsets the $11.1 million in Prop 1A hit that has been taken by the state. You'll see the Health and Human Services and HHS hit down here of $7 million is, again, a significant impact coming from the state. But again, that the final budget hit is about $7 million difference as opposed to what was in proposed. Uses of funds, again, unless there are any significant questions, this is how it breaks out by way of review. Again, ties out to the same $7 million figure that you just saw a moment ago in the sources Now turning to the special districts and county service areas that are also governed by the board in the final budget. There are 171 entities actually that are special districts and county service areas that are governed by your board. The recommended final budget will have $45.5 million for them, net increase of almost $6 million. Within there, there are 159 road maintenance parks and lighting districts, three sewer maintenance districts, and nine sewer and water districts. At the close of today's public hearing, we'll be returning to your, we anticipate returning to the board to, and report on any state budget changes and to, of course, continue to monitor the board, I'm sorry, and monitor the budget performance throughout the year. Now, the next steps this afternoon will be to conduct the public hearing portion of today's presentation, and then at the conclusion of that, to direct the staff to prepare the resolution for the presentation at the next board meeting to, and to adopt the final budget, which would be in accordance of, in accordance with item B on your board packets, B 1 through 7 that are in the board memo before you today. And at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions? You do. He almost got away.
Starting on page 67 of our staff report. I've identified three different areas, revenue areas that I wanna dig into a little deeper. These are the three areas that we're actually seeing increases in, in our revenue, and would like to just dig into those. We're looking at intergovernmental revenues, where we're showing an increase of about $52 million, no, I'm sorry, or '08-'09 actual, an increase of about $48 million, so about 25%. And I just wanna be clear where these things are coming from. So when I jump to intergovernmental revenues on page 72, continuing on to 73, I'm seeing line item 755 under state construction, going up from about $1.3 million up to almost $19 million. So what is contained, what are we seeing there? The lion's share of it is, is in a little note offside, it says Public Ways and Facilities Fund. We have an idea where that roughly $10 million, sorry, more than that, $14, $13 million increase year over year is, is gonna show up.
Well, Jeff, digging through the budget book, let me take a stab on it. You know, your board also had an earlier budget item dealing with erosion control projects up in Tahoe. This last year, Public Works has received quite a few awards specific to Lake Tahoe on EIP-type projects. I would suspect the majority of those dollars are in that column there. Other projects that you've seen, the aid to the stimulus dollars that went to the Auburn-Folsom project, a little bit of money there, but I think that was about a million something in, in federal aid. To point out what's not in there is a sunset interchange that was done essentially with local funds, so it would be not included in that budget amount.
Then I'm, I'm seeing under the federal aid, 771, from an '08-'09 actual of about $10 million up to a proposed for today's action, about $45 million.
Yeah, 45.
So $35 million increase. Where are we gonna see that, and what's the source of that money?
Allison, do you have a answer for that? Allison Carlos is our principal analyst that oversees and ceded in public works budgets.
I think I have the right page. You're looking at schedule five?
Yes.
Okay. A sign, the $18 million, significant portion of that is for rebudgets. So there's a revenue change between proposed and final budget, but there's also an expenditure change.
That was over on 755, correct?
Yeah, and that's about $17.2 million.
Okay. And then, so when you say rebudget, it means we, we had it previously, we're just rolling it over into this year?
Right. When, when you close the year out, you don't know exactly how that's gonna materialize, and so, yeah.
Sure. And then, under federal construction of the $35 million that we're seeing versus actual last year, I'm assuming some percentage of that is also rebudgeted, but that's where I'm, I'm assuming some of the ARRA dollars are showing up?
I think that's part of the description that Tom is, is making relative to the Tahoe projects.
So I guess just of that, roughly $52 million that we're seeing increasing on that one revenue line item that is intergovernmental revenue, 52 coming from there, but additional cuts for a net of 48 on that one line item, intergovernmental revenues. We're not looking at any of that in terms of operating dollars. That's all capital improvements on those.
Yes, those are capital project dollars. They primarily support contract services and things of that nature.
Okay. And then the, the next one under charges for service, where we saw an actual of $53 million and proposed this year of $83 million, about a 60% increase. I'm seeing, I believe, charges for service on page 72. Nope, wrong, that's where it was, sorry. I have too many pages dogged. On page 76, where we're showing, is that charges for service, that's the sum total of that one? Where we're showing roads and street services, 817, going from about $3, $3.5 million up to $33 million. So again, about a $30 million jump there from our actual last year up to what we're looking at today. The lion's share under, something says Public Ways and Facilities Fund.
Yeah, I remember. Again, those look like reimbursed road projects, which would not be the operating funding.
Okay, all right. And then, thank you. And then finally--
Supervisor, also I think included in there is charges to CSA budgets.
Okay.
Correct.
But I'm, I'm assuming that relatively speaking, year over year, the charges to CSA budgets are gonna remain fairly constant. That wouldn't account for a, a jump of like $30 million in one budget?
No, that wouldn't account for all of that.
Yeah, okay. And then finally, on page 79, under transfers in, 800, item 873, the capital improvements transfers in category is 8990, we're showing an increase of almost $50 million, a little over $50 million from actual last year to what we're being asked to approve this year under Capital Projects Fund.
Jeff, you should have that answer.
I think that is not necessarily the road projects.
Sorry?
Those aren't necessarily road projects, so I'm gonna have Jeff answer.
I'm sorry, which line is it?
It's on page 79. It's line 8990, operating transfers in capital improvements. See a rather healthy increase of almost $50 million.
Supervisor, if I could, Jim Durfee with City Services. Most of that pertains to the South Placer jail.
Okay. Thank you. You know, kinda in light of what we just finished dealing with, this budget, we would be looking at a budget decreasing, not the $81 million that you're talking about, but roughly double that if it weren't for a number of different either one-time dollars coming in or budget readjustments to capital expenditures from dollars that we've already captured elsewhere, largely driven by developer fees. So we look at an $81 million budget and, or cut in our budget, and, and yeah, it's pretty dire. It's a nine, I believe you showed a 9.3% reduction in our overall annual spending. I guess my point is it could be a lot worse. And it's a shame that none of the folks that were here for the last item are still here to see this item and hear this item and understand what it is that this board has been grappling with for some time in order to continue that long-term economic viability that we need to assure, so that when they do retire, they do have a hope of a retirement. So when you look at how bad things are, I guess it could be worse, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
You know, unlike Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, they're all bankrupt.
Right, right. I guess we could be like most other government agencies and just kick the can down the road, let some other board of supervisors in the, in the future have to grapple with and solve this problem, but--
You'd have to work with the state of California.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good, you're good.
Do we need a motion to--
Oh, cut over to the public. Open this item up to the public for anybody which has a comment on this item. Don't be afraid, I won't bite. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we direct staff to prepare a resolution for presentation to our, the next board meeting for our final budget, which would include the revisions outlined 1 through 7 in our agenda summary.
Okay. Do we need a roll call, or is that just a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. I have a comment to make now that we've finished this process. And this morning was not something I really looked forward to. We have asked county departments to scrimp and save this year, and all, we just voted to, you know, impose upon the Deputy Sheriff's Association. And, you know, they've all done it one way or another. They've done an incredible job, and the public has been well-served. I think our board has done a good job in cutting expenses, and this team effort has paid off. Next year will be tough. As we go forward, let's continue to look for more ways to save. And one small area, for example, would be our own travel expenses or any other expenses. Anybody has any suggestions? Anyway, just keep that in mind as we look to save, cut down on expenditures and where we conduct our business, and the most, most efficient way to do that-- I have a line. Oh, Jennifer.
I'm not sure if you were actively looking for suggestions at this time, but something that's occurred to me is, in terms of our Tahoe meetings, we could make them one day so that we, you know, save on, on some of those travel costs and other expenses related to meals and, and hotels. It's not fun to drive up and back every day or in a, in a single day, but it is certainly somewhere that we could look at some sort of cost savings.
I think that's a good start. I mean, any way we can, I don't know what that costs, but if we could do the business in one day, we'd have to leave early in the morning.
If you would like us, we could take a look at, again, I know that there's more than one purpose for the meetings up in Tahoe in terms of just reaching out to constituents, but I think our October meeting is looking rather light for up in Tahoe, and I'm not even sure if it warrants from a business perspective that we need the meeting up in Tahoe, other than just a constituent contact. So, so we can look at that and get back to your board for agenda purposes.
I mean, I, I would imagine, and I, you know, I got no problem with it, we're gonna be scrutinized even, even further, but, you know, I look at what happened in Sack County, and I'll go back to that. They've laid off over 100 deputies, and others' jobs are in peril because they basically kicked the can versus trying to deal with it. This is, this is not a fun thing. I guarantee, I didn't really look forward to this morning. It's, it's well above my pay grade, I guess I could say. But, you know, we have 24, over 2,400 employees in the county, and I was there. I had the same argument when I was representing the Roseville Police Office. You know, we're different, you know? It never flew then, and it obviously didn't fly today either. They are different, they do a different job than we do. But it's just tough, and hopefully over time, we can work together, we can continue to meet with them, and if, you know, this might be the catalyst that they come forward and we actually have a meaningful discussion and put in a contract, put something in place that is lasting, and we can continue to work better. Because I mean, once things do pick up, and I am optimistic at some point in time, it's going to, so. I thank all of you for your hard work today and, and being here, and we will adjourn.
No.
Oh.
Page 53.
I thought we'd finished it.
Redevelopment?
I was, I was in too big a hurry, I thought we'd finished it all.
It's easy to overlook Rich, but--
Well, 'cause yeah, now we're gonna have to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency. Rich Caldwell and Jim Laboue.
You probably want both of them to take a very long time and go through the entire staff report.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Line by line.
We will be brief. We will already at the onset cut the presentation in half. I think you've already heard over the last meetings, the projects that we've been working on. You've seen PowerPoint presentations, you've taken tours and such, so we won't go into those today. I will say, however, that we do have a mixed message for you today on the agency's final budget. There are some bad news on the revenue side, but there's also a very positive overall outlook. Our fiscal year 2009-2000 budget totals $36,79,000, and is a notable decrease from 2007-2008 final budget of approximately $40 million, and also the final budget from last year, which was about $38 million. which was about thirty-eight million. The primary funding source of Redevelopment Agency is tax increment and we're looking at a significant decrease in that funding source compared to last year due not only to the economy but mostly to state legislative takings. Whereas the county is assuming an overall decrease of about three percent in property tax revenues, Redevelopment Agency project areas will be relatively flat to slightly negative. However, the state has decided to target redevelopment agencies to solve their budgetary problems and will take approximately three-point-two million dollars this year, which is a full thirty-two percent decrease. However, the state also said that the money must come from the commercial side. We're not allowed to reduce any of the funding for the affordable housing programs in the county. Therefore, when measured against a commercial tax increment, the project areas are looking at one-year hits of up to seventy percent. This will limit our options, obviously, particularly unless the state restores some of that next year as we hope they will do. However, we're not overly optimistic at this point. So what we've done is we are making some adjustments. And number one, we'll continue to be very conservative in our revenue planning and expenditure commitments. We've always maintained a large reserves for specific projects that were coming down the horizon, so we're going to make use of those reserves. We have cut back significantly on administrative and operating expenditures. Our staffing costs are down fifteen percent this year. We're keeping two and a half out of sixteen positions vacant. We're reducing our use of outside consultants and we're requiring internal staff to do more. We're also contracting with other staff within the county from CEDRA and other agencies that otherwise were having work shortages, so we're working with that as well to take advantage of what we have in-house. We're continuing to aggressively seek out and apply for grants. In fact, we just received notice last year, or last week, that we've been approved for an eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar federal neighborhoods stabilization program grant. We won't consider issuing any more bonds until our revenue picture improves significantly and the future threat of state takings is evaluated. So with that, I'm going to sacrifice Jim's presentation. If you have specific presentation, or questions about the specific projects, Jim would be more than happy to respond to those.
I have a motion. I got no questions. Comments? Anybody in the public want to comment on this item? Bring it back to the board. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Now we will adjourn as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency Board and be convene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and take up item number seven. Presentation by Carol Arnold, Foothills Farmers Market Association. See, the reason I tried to get out of here quick is I was in a hurry to eat.
Eat lunch, right? Too bad the crowd emptied out early. I'm Carol Arnold, the General Manager of the Foothill Farmers Market Association. My presentation is somewhat more lighthearted than the previous two. We get to talk about farmers markets and food. The FFMA is celebrating its twentieth anniversary this year. Through the hard work and dedication of many people over the years, the association has continued to thrive and prosper. Many thanks to the Board of Supervisors, the Placer County Department of Agriculture, especially Christine Turner Agricultural Commissioner, Josh Hunsinger, Assistant Agricultural Commissioner, and Keith Kohler, Senior Ag Inspector, and their staffs who support the farmers market in both word and deed. Special thanks to the FFMA Board of Directors who have seen the FFMA through some difficult times and have had the courage to identify challenges, take action to meet those challenges, and to move the association forward through careful planning and creative vision. The FFMA has stayed true to its founding charter as supported and funded by the Placer County Board of Supervisors twenty years ago. In two thousand nine, as in nineteen eighty-nine, our identity as an association is the same. We are dedicated to offering direct sales opportunities to small farmers in Placer Nevada counties. In addition, we invite small regional farms with sustainable growing practices and a complimentary product mix to participate in our markets. These additional farms bring added benefits to our local growers and the consumers who shop at our markets by bringing in a variety of products due to their extended growing seasons, slightly different climate. All of these things make the market more desirable for our customers. The FFMA remains committed to providing a vibrant, safe, well-regulated marketplace. We are committed to the certified farmers market system. The population in Placer County has changed in the last twenty years. Many people who live here have come from the Bay Area and Southern California. They brought with them an expectation for very large event-style farmers markets. We've met them halfway. We accommodate that population by providing four large markets in Auburn, at the Whole Foods Fountain Market in Roseville, Tahoe City, and Truckee. We provide prepared foods, music, and other amenities that one might find in a more urban marketplace. In our large markets, we invite artisans with complimentary products to sell alongside our local growers to provide a one-stop shopping experience. We offer locally grown certified fruits, vegetables, nuts, lamb, beef, and pork along with olive oil from contiguous counties. We have continued to serve the population of smaller, more rural communities by providing primarily certified producer-based markets on a smaller scale. This winter, the Board of Directors decided to close four underperforming markets. Those included Lake of the Pines in Nevada County, Folsom Thursday Nights in Sacramento County, Rockland, and Lincoln at the Persimmon Cafe. How do we decide to close a market? First of all, farmers markets must benefit multiple growers. We closed one market because there were no regularly attending, participating Placer County growers. Some markets were in poorer locations with low traffic. One market was part of a larger nighttime event which was not suited for a farmers market. So what's the criteria for opening a new market or changing to a new location? Through research, we have identified the following keys to successful markets in the Northern California marketplace. Number one is multiple vendors, more than twenty in a suburban area, twelve over the winter, and at least five in a rural area. There must be tents that are visible from, from streets. There needs to be high traffic and we need to provide high-quality market. We are asked by many groups to sponsor farmers markets at their events. In order to participate, we ask the sponsoring group to pay all of our fees, pay for any administrative time, and pay for a site manager. We may also ask for an additional fee to produce income. We charge low or no stall fees to create as little risk as possible for the growers. They still invest time, energy, and gasoline into any new effort. That's why we are slow to open new markets. Sometimes new ventures fail, such as the markets at Folsom and Lincoln, but sometimes new ventures are wildly successful. For example, the move to Whole Foods and Fountains Market was filled with good fortune. Although precipitated by a deteriorating relationship with a property management firm, the move could not have turned out better, we were able to take the Roseville Square Farmers Market and turn it into a thriving year-round market. This ten-month-old market will have forty-five vendors today with attendance already exceeding the Auburn Old Town Saturday Market. The partnership between Whole Foods and the FFMA has created mass marketing opportunities to the citizens of Roseville and surrounding communities, along with opportunities for small Placer County growers to sell at Whole Foods. One of our growers, Snow Citrus Court, was recently listed on a national map of local growers produced by the Whole Foods marketing team. So how are the ten markets remaining doing in this challenging economy? They're doing very well. Here are some attendance figures. The Tahoe Basin accounts for two thousand visitors on a slow week and three thousand at peak. The markets are Tahoe City, Truckee, and Kings Beach. Challenges to those markets include decreased tourism, road construction on Interstate eighty, carryover from the fires last year. They're still very strong markets. The Auburn region, which includes Colfax, Auburn Old Town, DeWitt, and Forest Hill, account for an estimated twenty-five-hundred visitors each week. Peak attendance numbers run as high as three thousand. Challenges include location issues in Colfax, county personnel shifts to Roseville for the DeWitt Market, and parking limitations in Auburn Old Town. Forest Hill continues to thrive by limiting the number of vendors who attend and capitalizing on customer loyalty. The Roseville area, which includes Whole Foods Fountain Market and the Quarry Ponds at Granite Bay Market, average an estimated twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand visitors each week. Both markets moved this year and we expect them to continue to grow and improve as the months go on. Sales continue to hold steady in this challenging economic time. We continue to educate the farmers on economic changes and what they mean to sales. As an association, we continue to differentiate what we have to offer to the consumer. Our target population is one that values quality foremost and sustainable growing practices. Some of our accomplishments in the last year are that the FFMA is fiscally sound, which is really good news considering what I'm hearing. We received our permanent TRPA use permit a year ago. We went through the two thousand eight and two thousand nine market seasons with no issues regarding the conditions to that permit. In an effort to support new growers, the Board of Directors decided to accept all Placer County Nevada row crop farmers who applied to come into the farmers market. That resulted, that directly resulted in the addition of three local farms, two from Placer County and one from Nevada. I was thinking that that might not mean too much to you, but when you think about a farm growing enough produce to actually come to a market week after week to sell, that's an incredible accomplishment. And to think that we were able to add three in twelve months is huge. That means something's going really well. So our goals include, we would like to continue to educate the people of Placer County on the benefits of buying farm-direct produce, eggs, milk, honey, and nuts. We would like to add the sale of poultry to the markets, which means ironing some stuff out with environmental health. We'd like to increase attendance at all ten markets and we would like to add three markets. I'm really happy to announce that we're working with the City of Rockland to reestablish that market. We're working with the Office of Economic Development and the Chamber of Commerce to identify. There are fourteen different business districts in Rockland. It's kind of hard to figure out where to put a market. We just haven't identified it yet, but we're actively working. And I'm really excited to announce that for the first time in twenty years, we're going to open an additional Saturday market. We're working with the City of Roseville, Whole Foods, and the Fountains and may have a market at the Fountains on Saturdays in as soon as thirty to forty-five days. And we expect that one to eclipse the market at Sunrise Mall, which is very exciting. It's a very exciting venture. So the other thing that we're working on doing is in the next year, we're going to need to go wireless on EBT so that we can accept EBT clients. We're not quite sure how that's all going to work yet, but there's pending legislation that may force us to do it in order to be certified, so we're going to have to work it out. The hardest part is when you get really rural and cellphone connections and stuff, so we're not quite sure how to iron out the bugs, but I know people are doing it, so. The other thing is we're very excited that the WIC program is going to be expanding so that it won't just be a twenty-dollar coupon to come to farmers markets, but we expect by two thousand ten, two thousand eleven that WIC clients will be able to choose to spend all of their funding for fruits and vegetables at farmers markets instead of grocery stores. So how can you help? You can support local farms by buying your food directly from them. You can buy directly from a farmers market, direct from the farm, and direct from local businesses who carry locally-produced food. Confluence Kitchen and Newcastle Produce are both businesses who started at the farmers market and who carry locally-raised meat and produce. We must all be dedicated to educating the consumer at every opportunity as to the difference between local sustainable farming practices and factory farming. That's phase one. I'm almost done. It's almost time to eat. This is really an important thing and I think it's really important in light of the budget and everything that's gone on. I feel very fortunate. I've gone to conferences. I went to an international market conference. People were represented from all over the world. And I have to tell you that most people don't know their ag commissioner. Most people don't know their environmental health people. They have no relationship. They're regulators that come down in and regulate and that's all. I feel very, very fortunate that the Department of Agriculture in Placer County and the Environmental Health Departments are very supportive, very available, and very professional. We're very, very, can't use that word enough apparently, lucky to have them. And I feel very, I feel supported and taken care of by both of those agencies and I'm glad you're funding them. So this is a separate report that I wanted to do on environmental health's relationship with the farmers market. It's been a very, God, what's with me now? I've got that word stuck in my head. Okay, I'm just going to report. Okay. Over the last two years, the Department of Environmental Health and the Foothill Farmers Market have had an opportunity to learn to become partners in an effort to maintain a healthy food supply in Placer County. Our relationship has not always been positive. I'm very proud to have been a part of a sustained effort to move both parties off of an almost adversarial position to a place of true collaboration. Collaboration and cooperation are words that are overused and have lost some meaning. In the case of environmental health and the Foothill Farmers Market Association, those words most accurately describe our working relationship in September of two thousand nine. I must say, I was skeptical that we would ever get here. How did things get so bad? Like most relational problems, ours can be traced back to a lack of effective communication. We had different working vocabularies and vastly different interpretations of the California retail food code. At issue was the ability to cook at the farmers markets, cost of environmental health fees, consistency of violation reporting, consistency of findings, and a uniform approach to enforcement. I can't speak for environmental health, but I suspect they thought we didn't know the rules and that the rules we didn't know, we didn't want to follow. I think they were right. We thought they didn't understand that the FFMA wasn't a festival and that we were, that they kind of lumped us into any other festival that moves from place to place. And I think we were somewhat right. The FFMA asked for help from Supervisor Weigant and on his behalf, Jennifer Pereira began the process of trying to help these two groups come together. I thought that Jennifer was going to find out that the Foothill Farmers Market Association was one-hundred percent correct and that environmental health was one-hundred percent wrong. But what Jennifer did is she interviewed me extensively and she interviewed Jill Paul, the Director of Environmental Health, separately in an effort to figure out how two groups with such similar goals could be in such a place of opposition. Then Jennifer invited Jill and I out to coffee. What we discovered through a couple of coffee class sessions attended and facilitated by Jennifer was that EH and the FFMA did indeed have similar goals for food safety. We were just taking very different approaches to the same issue. We soon discovered that acting as a team, we could quickly and efficiently resolve the concerns on both sides. We began to trust one another and our motives. Although we had a great deal of respect for each other personally, we began to respect each other's roles and responsibilities in the workplace. Where are we today? Today, I'm happy to report that the farmers market in Placer County are sampling prepared foods at our markets following procedures approved by environmental health. In turn, the FFMA now uses environmental health as a place to go for help and education. We no longer view them as just an evil agency of enforcement. I have personally learned that the key to success is to include environmental health in the conversation upfront. We have three ongoing ag issues right now that intersect environmental health. The mobile poultry processor, gleaning homegrown fruits and vegetables for public distribution, and the opportunity for developing cheesemaking industry in Placer County. I am now a fierce cheerleader for including environmental health in the conversation from the beginning. That way, we can work collaboratively and cooperatively with respect and trust to find optimal solutions. In conclusion, I'd like to express my sincere thanks first to Jennifer Pereira, whose facilitation skills are something to behold. Without her, I'm not sure where we would be. Thank you to Supervisor Weigant for supporting agriculture and encouraging Jennifer to help us find a solution. As for the group of professionals in environmental health, thank you so much. Jill Paul, thank you for your continued support, encouragement, your professionalism, and your amazing research skills. There isn't a question I have posed regarding public health that Jill hasn't found an answer to. Thank you to Richard Brown for your level-headed approach to sampling and inspection and your willingness to be patient and educate us all on the finer points of food safety. Tess Schwimmer, Diane Garricki have been incredible out in the field. Their inspections are thorough and they are both willing to explain why regulations apply. The staff in Tahoe, although we don't see much of you, you've been clear, consistent, and very helpful. And last of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Burton, whose leadership allowed all of this to occur. And last of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Burton, whose leadership allowed all of this to occur. All in all, this has been a positive experience. We are lucky to have a group of people working at environmental health who don't simply power over us, but are willing to work alongside us and to provide a safer and healthier food system for the residents of Placer County. Thank you.
Robert, I think we ought to use Jennifer to work with the DSA and...
She'd love to, I'm sure. So thank you. And we have framed 20th anniversary posters for each of you.
Carol, I do have one question.
Uh huh.
I've been approached by a number of the vendors from Colfax, who have been very concerned with what they perceive as a fairly substantial drop-off in their business due to relocation. Is there some way that, you know, we as an entity or as individuals can help maybe get them moved back to where they were? I mean, what would you suggest?
Boy. Gosh, the politically correct response to that would be what, Jennifer? We have an issue with the city council. It's just, it's very straightforward. That was, the Colfax Farmers Market happens to be a community event. It's supported by the community. Folks came down to the market, and not only did they buy produce, but then they walked down and got ice cream. The friends at the library were there. That was, that was more important, I think, at that market than just simply the produce. It was the community coming together to this event. And when they moved the event to a parking lot away from downtown, it's not, it's not that far away, but it's in perception. It's cut off from the street. The market started crashing. And although 200 people showed up to a meeting to testify that they wanted the market to stay in the street, the council still voted against it. I came back and reported that they might, they might lose their market, and nothing has changed. So I don't, I really don't know how the Board of Supervisors can help with that.
We are meeting with the city, new city manager of Colfax on a staff level, so we'll try and bring up the subject, and perhaps we can assist them in seeing it, the importance of having the market in the downtown environment.
Thank you. We'd appreciate it.
Now, Robert, you have a presentation, correct? I don't want to shortchange anybody here.
Wait, we get to do ours first. Here, allow me to stop the supervisor. Go ahead, you guys. This is Bob Roan, the president, the FFMA, Dan Macon, the vice president, and Bob Bonk, the treasurer.
This is what happens when you don't come to a board meeting.
Thank you very much.
That's the way we set our committees.
Well, you've heard us. What we are gonna do is present each of the Board of Supervisors a framed plaque of our 20th anniversary schedule for the farmers market. Hopefully, you hang it in your office, and hopefully, we'll see you at the Foothill Farmers Markets, whether it's in Roseville, Auburn, North Tahoe, whatevers.
Thank you. It's very nice.
Carol, before you leave.
Yes?
We have a resolution for you, and I'm just gonna, kinda talk my way through it. But obviously, it's 20-year anniversary of the Foothill Farmers Market. The county had changed dramatically in the years prior to that. Obviously, we used to have a very vigorous stone fruit industry here. But I want to point out that whereas a lot of people complain or state that agriculture in Placer County is gone or leaving fast, we have the ag report in our board packet, and it's still a $60-plus-million industry in Placer County. It's a very important industry. So I think more than anything, it's important to remember that agriculture, like any other industry, changes. And 20 years ago, some bright folks saw that the opportunity in Placer County was to direct-market their locally-grown produce and other agricultural products, noting that Placer County is very fortunate to be able to grow a huge array of agricultural products at a very high quality of, at a very high quality. In fact, that was one of the reasons why the stone fruits declined. It was just cheaper to get produce to the market when they started irrigating places like Imperial Valley, but the fruit wasn't as good. But in Placer County, also commensurate with that is that we've had a tremendous growth in disposable income so that there were local folks who were willing to pay and wanted to pay more for higher-quality agricultural items. So the county actually participated in giving about $15,000 in seed money. Alex Farrar, my predecessor on the board, was the first president of the association. And obviously, over the last 20 years, it's done very well. In that same vein, the county also partnered with Placer Groundling and gave them a significant amount of seed money to get up and running. And they're also doing, doing very well. It's my understanding that only about 2% of the Placer County population actually shops at our local farmers markets, so with an easy increase from that base, it could be a huge infusion of capital and investment into not only great agricultural stuff, but a quality of life that I think is commensurate with the kind of, commensurate with the kind of land use planning that we've done in the county, the desire to make sure that we preserve our open space in a meaningful manner, the conservation plan as it relates to conserving our natural resources. They're all a big part of the same fabric. And then last, I would be remiss in not actually noting Joanne Neft, who's always been activist for agriculture in Placer County. She was the first manager of the Foothill Farmers Market. I actually attended that first grand opening down in, down in Loomis. But I personally, again, want to reiterate, I want to thank you, Carol, and Jennifer Pereira, and Jill Paul, for the work that you all did. And I actually did sit on the sidelines and just kinda listen to the stories and watch it emerge from what was a really difficult, unworkable relationship between environmental health and the folks at the farmers markets. And to now, I'm very pleased to hear that we have this partnership like we have on the economic development side. So if you ever need me to get out of the way again, just let Jennifer know. And I'd be more than happy to do that, because I think our future here for agriculture is actually really, really rich. Really, really rich, as long as we continue to do a great job in terms of land use planning, making sure the farmers aren't run out of business because they can't farm anymore because of the urban development patterns, but still, at the same time, plan well for urbanization and financially make it all come together. So again, thanks, and I'm gonna shut up for sure and give you this resolution, because I don't want to be holding this up for lunch any further.
I've just about eaten all the goodies here. Locally grown.
Let's eat.
All right, we will adjourn.